On October 31st, we'll be doing our annual Fall Carnival at the Old Town Activity Park from 6:00 to 9:00. And that coincides with the Halloween celebrations in Old Town. And we also have the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission is hosting a haunted house at the youth center on Saturday, October 29th, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. for ages 13 and above, which means it must really be scary. And on Halloween night, from 6:00 to 9:30 for ages 10 and above. Under 10, they can go in accompanied by an adult. The library's having their book fair at the Cottonwood Fairgrounds on October 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And this Saturday is the Kids Against Hunger Community Meal Packing Event. All three sessions set up for city employees to pack are filled, which I'm very proud of our employees. And anyone who still wants to volunteer can show up and they will be assigned. They are also still taking donations, so... That's it. One other thing, I noticed probably Mr. Rooney passed out the seminar or symposium that's going to be put on by the Arizona Association for Economic Development. This will be Designing Downtowns for Economic Success, and this is on October 26th at the Cottonwood Public Safety Building. And that begins at...registration begins at 9:15. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Councilmembers? Anything going on? All right. Introduction of new employees. We have John Carter, Information Technology Manager, and Henning Beck, Radio and Telecommunications Technician Advisor. And so would your supervisors please come up and...I think, is that Rudy? Is Rudy?
Rudy's back there.
Rudy! Rudy!
There he is.
Oh, okay, so it's your item, new employees.
I'm sorry, we lost our volume back there, so I have no idea where we are, where our places are.
We need IT.
I know.
Or a radio technician, maybe.
Mayor Council, we have two additions to our IT department. One of them is still not here, exactly working on some IT stuff across the parking lot. So we'll start off with Henning Beck here. He's our new radio communications technician advisor. Northern San Diego area. He's worked for the United States Marine Corps Camp Pendleton as an ELMR radio technician.
ELMR radio.
There you go.
All right.
Contracted through Motorola and Syntec Solutions for the past eight and a half years. He's maintained the base Motorola Astro 7.5 system along with the fire station learning plant and reverse 911 communications. Before that, he's worked for the Motorola Service Center onsite with DEA, US Marshals, Department of Justice, and different other fire department agencies. Henning's here to get away from the hard city life, which some of us can appreciate getting away from, and to spend some time with his four-year-old son, Riker. He's been looking for an opportunity for some time to move into an area such as Cottonwood, and he's really pleased. And he's a kind of a funny guy, too. Found that out at a recent gathering.
Thank you so much.
Would you like to share any information?
No, I'm pretty much, I'm kind of a shy kind of person.
You're shy, okay. Thank you for your service, also.
Thank you.
And thank you on behalf of the citizens of Cottonwood. I'm sure you'll do a great job for them.
With that, I'd like to reserve a chance, an opportunity to get back with you on John as soon as he gets away from our office.
Okay, if he comes during the meeting, we'll take time out and let you introduce him. And if he doesn't, we'll reschedule it for another meeting.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Work before pleasure, right?
Exactly.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is proclamations. We have three. One is declaring October 22, 2016 as Veterans History Day. Do we have Jolene Pearson with us tonight? All right, she's here. So do you want to come up and share a little bit of information? You have done this for what, three, four years now? And you did it in Sedona before you brought it to Cottonwood.
Well, we were always in...we include everybody. It's through the Sedona Public Library, but we include the entire Verdi Valley. And we would even include flagstaff and places north of here because our program is the only one in northern Arizona, north of Prescott. So everybody, you know, we'd like to serve as many veterans as we can. And if you don't know about the Veterans History Project, it's a project through the Library of Congress. The objective is to collect, record, and preserve the oral histories of our nation's war veterans and also civilians who contributed to the war effort, such as Rosie the Riveters or nurses, USO entertainers, any aircraft designers, people like that. So we'd like to say that we have every eligible person in the Verdi Valley, but we haven't made that goal yet.
We're still working on it.
We're still working on that. We do the interviews in a private room at the Sedona Library, and I tell everybody the really most important thing is the DVD that we give you, because then you have that for your family. Yes, it's nice to have one for the Library of Congress, and it will result in a much broader understanding of what it's like to serve during wartime in the military, because it won't be just the generals and the admirals. It'll be the cook and the supply sergeant and the regular ground pounder. So the great project, I would encourage you, if you know of a veteran, or if you are a veteran, just go on the Sedona Library website at sedonalibrary.org, or call the Sedona Library and find out about it. Come and schedule an interview and be part of the progress and part of the process.
How many do you think you've interviewed since you started the program?
I think I have personally interviewed more than 200.
Wow, that's amazing.
Well, but it's not as many as I would like to. It doesn't...it sounds like a lot, but then I think, geez, I've been doing this for seven years, I should have more than 200.
Oh, that sounds like a lot to me.
I've met some wonderful people, heard some incredible stories, and some vets have said to me, you know, I don't...I didn't do anything. And you'll be bored. Well, there hasn't been a boring interview yet, and everybody did the job they were assigned to do. Most people didn't get to pick what they wanted to do in the military. So I would encourage everybody to participate. It's a great program, and as I say, the most important part is the DVD you get that you can share with your family.
Yeah, that's interesting, because my husband's a Vietnam vet, and he has seldom talked about his experience, even to me after 47 years.
Get him to come and do an interview.
Well, I posted a Facebook post about rats crawling on him and all this stuff in Vietnam, and he says, Diane, that's nothing. You know, what some of the other people had to do, sleep in mud and, you know, he just...so like you said, they are very humble sometimes about what they've done.
And I don't make them talk about anything they don't want to, because sometimes there are some things that they just don't want to talk about.
They can't talk about.
And I tell everybody, you know, it's your interview, we're going to talk about what you want to.
Whatever you remember.
And we talk about not just their time in the service, but the rest of their life, too, because most often their military service was...had a big impact on the rest of their life. They either got some training that they were able to use later on, or they did a job that they said, I'm never doing that again.
Right.
And, you know, they were eligible for the GI Bill, could go back to school, they could use it for buying a house. I mean, there were some pretty remarkable advantages to compensate for all of the disadvantages. And not everybody had a disadvantage. I mean, I interviewed a guy that was in the Navy for two years, and all he did was play baseball. I mean, but that was a morale builder.
It was. It helped others.
For the troops, and he was in during the Vietnam War, went to San Diego, went to Hawaii, but...
So how long does the average interview take?
The Library of Congress imposes a 90-minute limit.
Okay.
And I've had a lot of people say, oh, I couldn't possibly talk for that long, but you'd be surprised.
Once it starts coming out, they share that. Well, thank you so much, Jolene, just personally for what you've done and all the time that you've given and how much you care about veterans. I mean, it's just apparent.
I tell the people at the library, you couldn't stop me now. If you locked the doors...I know people that know how to storm locked doors.
Right. Okay, well, we'll go ahead and read the proclamation, and then when we're done, you can come up here and accept it. Whereas the United States Congress created the Vietnam...created the Veterans History Project in 2000 through Public Law 106380, and whereas the Veterans History Project collects, preserves, and makes accessible the personal accounts of American war veterans so that the future generations may hear directly from veterans and better understand the realities of war and military service. And whereas local Cottonwood veterans and their families and our community have benefited from this opportunity. And whereas the Veterans Project...Veterans History Project volunteers will host a midday event on October 22nd, 2016 to honor and thank project participants. Now therefore, I Diane Jones, Mayor of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, on behalf of the Cottonwood City Council, do hereby proclaim October 22nd, 2016 as Veterans History Project Day in Cottonwood. And I'll add, it's Sedona and the Verdi Valley, and maybe flagstaff, Prescott. And witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand this 18th day of October 2016. And I would like to ask our council member, Ruben Howdige, to give you this proclamation as he is a Vietnam veteran.
Okay. Thank you. By the way, that law was passed unanimously. It's probably the last thing Congress ever agreed on.
That could very well be. So we want to come on the left-hand side, so that members of the public and the public members...
Okay. Was that in the right? It's in the right.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next proclamation is proclaiming November 6th, 2016 as Mitzvah Day. And we have Linda Klaudner. Did I say that correctly?
Perfect.
Is Linda here? Okay, welcome, Linda. Would you like to share a little bit of information about the Mitzvah program?
Rabbi Alicia Magal got together with Barbara Littrell and me 10 years ago, and we decided we needed a faith-based day of commitment from people to go out and be of service, to give back. And here we are in 2016. It started in 2006, so we are blessed. And basically, what it really was, was the idea that if someone goes out and does something and helps someone, that maybe they would really be interested in that organization that they have gone out to do some work for on Mitzvah Day and volunteer the entire year, whether it's once a week or once a month, but get something going, get people giving back and serving, and in a very loving and supporting atmosphere. And so far, we think we're doing a pretty good job.
You are.
At least we hope we are.
You are.
And one of the things we do is we try to get the veterans together so that we can find out what their needs are, and we have a little special project for the veterans every year, along with people in assisted living and so on. And what we really would love would be for more and more people to sign up. So this year, we have three places you can sign up. One in Sedona at St. Andrews, one in VOC, and now we have the Church of the Living Waters here on Mingus. So people who want to go and sign up to do something as a project can sign up here at the Church of the Living Waters, and then pick something here in Cottonwood, and actually really stay here the whole day. And we think that that's going to bring some more people on board. But we are so thankful that you are always behind us, and this gets done every year, and it really truly means a lot to us.
Well, and it means a lot to the community, because you help so many people, and...
Yeah, we need 200 volunteers this year, and we're kind of laughing about that, Mayor, because we couldn't believe it. Two years ago, we had 450 people show up.
Wow, that's awesome.
But we never try to overreach. We're grateful for what we get, and if we overreach, that's wonderful.
So I would ask Mr. Rodriguez, our IT head official, if he would get these on the internet in that green column on the left-hand side, the Mitzvah Day event and all of the opportunities. The city clerk, just to help the public know, she picked out a few that I'm going to read. There's a lot more, but these are the...some of the things you could volunteer for, indoor-outdoor projects. Four volunteers to sort clothes, price, and repair items at Twice as Nice, two in Cottonwood. Two volunteers to paint a wall at the Cottonwood Senior Center. Four volunteers to clean out, sort stuff, and shed at Cottonwood Senior Center. Four to six volunteers to stuff, label, and stamp envelopes for Verdi Valley Humane Society Cottonwood. Six to eight volunteers to paint three small rooms at Old Town Mission in Cottonwood. Four to six volunteers to assist in the Miracles Happen resale store in Cottonwood. Eight to 10 volunteers for landscape cleanup, power wash the building at Catholic Charities. 20 volunteers for Mitzvah Day administration staffing tables at registration. 10 volunteers to visit senior residents at Cottonwood Village. 10 to 12 volunteers to work with the USFS on erosion reduction project in Cornville. Eight to 10 volunteers to paint a wall, organize merchandise at Habitat for Humanity in Cottonwood. Craft projects. 20 volunteers to stuff, decorate, and sew 50 teddy bears for hospice patients. 15 volunteers to stuff and sew 100 large feely hearts for children in hospitals. 10 volunteers to make 100 holiday cards for veterans in the Verdi Valley area. 10 volunteers to make 10 no-sew blankets for women at Verdi Valley Sanctuary. 10 volunteers to make 12 no-sew blankets for children at Verdi Valley Sanctuary. 15 volunteers to make 144 holiday snow globes for Meals on Wheels recipients. Barbara Littrell and Rabbi Alicia Magal, 2016 co-chairs. Mitzvah Day is funded by grants and donations from the City of Sedona, Arizona Community Foundation of Sedona, Thrivant Financial, APS, local organizations, faith communities, businesses, and individuals. So if you would like to donate, you can contact Barbara Littrell. If you would like to volunteer today, call Barbara at 649-0135. That's 649-0135. Or email B.Littrell, and that's L.I.T.R.E.L.L. at AOL.com, and this information should be on the city's website if Mr. Rodriguez gets that published. So we'll go ahead and read...so if...I'll ask Barbara to send us this so that Rudy can just post it on the website. Okay, so the proclamation, whereas individuals and nonprofit organizations in Cottonwood and the Verdi Valley need help beyond what their means and current structures provide, and whereas volunteerism is the willingness of people to serve others without being motivated by their own financial gain. And whereas Mitzvah, the Hebrew word for commandment, has come to express acts of human kindness, and whereas since Mitzvah Day began in 2007, more than 400 projects have been completed and an average of 250 volunteers per year have contributed more than 11,000 hours of community service. And whereas Mitzvah Day helps organize...organizations attract new volunteers for work during the year, and whereas this day of service represents a significant value to the individuals and organizations of Cottonwood. And whereas 2016 is the 10th anniversary of Mitzvah Day in our community. Congratulations on that. Now therefore, I Diane Jones, Mayor of the City of Cottonwood, in recognition of the important role of service in the community, do hereby proclaim Sunday, November 6th, 2016 as Mitzvah Good Deed Day, a spirit-led day of community service to individuals and organizations in Cottonwood and the Verdi Valley, and urge all citizens to recognize the outstanding work of volunteers and to support these efforts by volunteering for one of the many projects designed to care for one another, the community, and the planet. Vice Mayor, you want to...so if you want to come up here and accept the proclamation. Vice Mayor Karen Piper is going to call us. Thank you very much. This is a very special proclamation. It's called Cities and Towns Week 2016. Whereas the citizens of Cottonwood rely on the City of Cottonwood to experience a high quality of life in our community, and whereas cities and towns in Arizona work 24 hours a day, seven days a week to deliver vital city services such as water and sewer utilities, fire, police, and emergency medical response to ensure safe communities. And whereas cities and towns in Arizona also provide services and programs that enhance the quality of life for residents, such as parks, utilities, street maintenance, sanitation, and recycling services, libraries, community centers, and recreation programs. And whereas it is important for Cottonwood to continue to provide the excellent delivery of services and programs that our citizens have come to expect in our community. And whereas it is one of the responsibilities of Cottonwood officials to ensure open and accessible government through frequent communication with citizens using various avenues and means. And whereas through participation and cooperation, citizens, community leaders, local businesses, and municipal staff can work together to ensure that services provided by the City of Cottonwood can remain exceptional elements of the quality of life in our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Cottonwood joins with the League of Cities and Towns and fellow municipalities across the state of Arizona in declaring October 16th through 22nd, 2016 as Arizona Cities and Towns Week. And we could possibly post this up on the website also. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is...
John Carter's here.
Oh, John is here? Okay, so if you'd like to go ahead and introduce John Carter, please?
First, may I have those flyers for the Mitzvah and the others? I'll get them up there.
Yes. Here's that. Can I...
I already have...
You have this? I need a copy of it.
I can run a copy and give it back to you. That'd be great.
Just email me.
That'd be fine. And you have a listing of...
Well, actually, I need it for tonight.
It's on the back.
Excellent.
Okay. Well, here's the one that Mary Ann made for me, if you want that, too. But I think she didn't put all of them on there, so that is...because it would take too long to read it all, but you can have whatever you want there. And I'll make sure you get this. I just need it for tonight.
That's fine, ma'am.
Okay.
All right. I'd like to introduce John Carter. He's been with us for about five weeks now. As our IT managers, you know, we...our previous IT manager decided to move to Japan. John relocated to Cottonwood from Charlottesville, Virginia, by way of Texas, and I'll say Texas because I'm not Texas, where he was an IT infrastructure project manager for S&amp;P Global Marketing Intelligence. Part of that, he worked 18 years for a company in Massachusetts as a network administrator and an IT manager. John and his wife Nancy recently took a break for almost a year to travel and do things on their bucket list before settling down again. They visited the Verdi Valley several times over the past two years, fell in love with the area, and wanted to move here. They have not achieved that goal of their bucket list. John's education includes a BA in history with a minor in computer engineering and electronics engineering, and an MSIS in information systems. He also served in the US Air Force for almost six years. With that, John, our new IT manager.
Thank you, John. Do you have any words of wisdom that you want to share? You don't have to, if you're shy, but...
No, just glad to be here. My wife Nancy and I love the area.
Good.
Always wanted to end up here at some point, but it's great to be able to come much earlier and work here and work with everyone.
Thank you, and thank you.
Everyone I've met has been great so far.
Good. We appreciate your future service to the citizens of Cottonwood.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is presentations. We have several. Yavapai College update by Dr. James Perry, Executive Dean at the Campus...Executive Dean, Campus Executive Officer for Verdi Valley Campus, and Director of University Governmental Relations.
Thank you, Mayor Jones. Councilmembers, every now and again, they like to give awards out to the longest titles.
That's a long one.
How long that is. Hopefully, you guys can seize. I'll try to...I want to talk tonight about some of the things the college is doing, and then if you could hold any questions, I'll answer any questions you have at the end of the presentation. All right, so community outreach. One of the focuses of Yavapai College is really to do more community outreach. And again, it's about providing educational opportunities for all of Yavapai County, but specifically in my role is here in the Verdi Valley. So the district governing board, last year, they looked at utilizing the VVBAC, the Verdi Valley Board Advisory Committee, to get feedback from constituents. And based on that, there were 16 recommendations that came through the VVBAC, which we're working on incorporating into the strategic plan for the Verdi Valley campus in the Verdi Valley. The other thing they utilized was focus forums, web feedback, open call, and then DGB members meeting with their constituents on a one-on-one basis. The focus is shifting this next year, where the DGB really wants to look at, and this is kind of a funny term, because we're all rural... and this is kind of a funny term, because we're all rural, but more rural Yavapai County, those that may be even smaller populations that may be underserved. Because one of our roles at the college is to provide access to higher education. And we've got pockets throughout Yavapai County that, whether it be broadband, whether it be libraries within their areas, they don't have access to coursework. So the DGB is really interested in how we can better serve those communities. So I'd call them rural rural communities. Surveys, web feedback, open call, and again, meeting with constituents. There's a variety of things that we do that either myself or other representatives from the college serve on to continually get feedback. The Executive Dean's Advisory Committee, Sedona Programming Group, which was really utilized to get feedback at the Sedona Center as we're going, we're getting ready to pull the trigger on renovation for that facility. High school superintendents, we meet with on a monthly basis. Of course, city and town councils. And then program advisory boards. If you didn't know this, we have advisory boards for every career and technical education program we have. And the key there is that it's made up of business and industry so that we can make sure that we're heading in the right direction and doing what we need to, both in current programs and then new programs as well. From a marketing perspective, general enrollment, of course, we do print, radio, web, a variety of channels. The interesting thing is, we've gone back the last couple of years to a printed schedule guide here over on the Verde Valley, because we think that constituents want something in their hand that they can read. Well, what the research is showing us is that's the older demographic. Now granted, we're double the national average in retirees over here in Yavapai County and here in the Verde Valley. But it's still important that we've got various materials, marketing materials, to the various groups that we're trying to get into the college. And of course, with the older population, the retirement population, that tends to be non-credit. Whereas when it comes to the credit side, it's radio, it's web, it's Facebook. And then again, it's recruitment getting down into the high schools themselves. So with recruitment, we do a variety of things in recruitment. And interesting enough, current enrollment for the Verde Valley is about 1,500 on duplicated headcount. And that's up almost 4% from last fall. Whereas the institution as a whole is down 3%. And I think that's due to a couple of different things. One is recruitment here. And if you guys don't know Heather Mulcair, she's our head of recruitment, and she resides here in the Verde Valley. She's done a tremendous job this last year in getting into the high schools and talking to students. In fact, our biggest gain in enrollment on the Verde Valley campus was 18 to 25. So that's that population coming out of high school and those that are a couple of years out of high school. We want that trend to continue because normally, we capture about 23% of the graduates in Yavapai County. So the question is, how do we capture more to help them realize that number one, college can be a reality for them? And number two, we've got a variety of programs that can help them either transfer to a four-year institution or train them for technical degrees. Community engagement. We try to be more and more out there with community events. You could see a number of them there. And of course, you've got some things that are listed from Prescott because we try to look at the whole Yavapai County as a whole. One of the things that's been key over here, I think, from our perspective, is the Verde Valley SciTech Festival and working with Mayor Jones and Rudy to really get students excited about STEAM, science, technology, education, art, and mathematics, trying to get them interested in careers that are related to that. Community events. We've got a variety of community events this year on and off campus here in the Verde Valley. Some, we've tried to leverage or partner with Sedona Performing Arts, with Mingus Union High School, because their venues are so much bigger than our pavilion on the Verde Valley campus. But a variety of things for the community. Some are free to the community, and of course, some cost a little bit of money, but they're nominal in the fees. Moving forward, focus on completion. For a long time, colleges, community colleges, had been focused on enrollment. That's no longer the case. I think this council's heard me say before that less than 2% of Yavapai College's budget is now state-funded. Both Maricopa and Pima Community College are zeroed out. No state funding. What's happening now is we're heavily tied to federal financial aid or student aid. And the interesting thing about that is when we look at poverty here in Yavapai County, and I'll use Verde Valley as an example, we have a lot of students on free and reduced lunch as you look at those numbers through K-12. Most of those students would qualify for Pell. Okay, free grant funding. So there is money available for those students to go to school. The focus on completion is tied to federal financial aid, where community colleges are going to be graded not on how many students they have, but how many students they finish in a timely fashion. And that presents some real challenges for us because over 60% of our student population is part-time, meaning that they work. So the national average for graduates for a two-year associate's degree, six years. That's nationally. So really, it's about talking about programs and being innovative where we can help students complete faster, in a more timely fashion, with just a minimum, if any, debt, so that they can either go into the workforce or go on to a baccalaureate degree. MOUs, IGAs for improved access, dual enrollment with the high school so that they can start to get credit prior to even graduating from high school. Currently, this semester, we have over 150 students at Sedona, Camp Verde, and Mingus that are taking college credit that articulates straight to a university. For credit, of course, we offer general education, those transfer, that block of transfer credits for a baccalaureate degree, as well as career and technical education in viticulture and analogies, film and media arts, culinary and hospitality, nursing, CNA, welding. And really, the future for us is really about working with Valley Academy for Career and Technology Education. And can we leverage resources? And can we create that articulated pathway for students? And I think with new leadership in that group, we're off to a great start. On the non-credit, community education, College for Kids, we had over 480 enrollments this summer on the Clarkdale Campus, which rivaled what Prescott was able to do for College for Kids. And a lot of that was due to the partnership with Cottonwood Oak Creek School District, Barbara Urn and Steve King, and also Karen Ward at Beaver Creek. So now we're looking at, how do we expand that out? How do we provide resources and those opportunities to the outlying areas over here, such as Beaver Creek, Rim Rock, some of those other areas? Just a quick note, the college is getting to, ready to renovate the Sedona Center. And in meeting with Sedona constituents, there were four things they identified that they wanted to see up there. More general education for transfer. They wanted community education. We've got a strong contingent of Osher Lifelong Learning up there. They wanted to see culinary and hospitality. And they wanted to see something in the arts. Well, right now, with the renovation, we're able to do three of those. And that's culinary and hospitality, where we're looking at building two state-of-the-art kitchens, one for savory and one for baking and pastry. And really, the intent of that is not only to meet a current workforce here, but again, provide additional educational opportunities for students that may want to choose that as a career and with that, as hospitality as well. The one area, we're going to be able to do gen ads and we're going to be able to do community ed up there as well. The one area we weren't able to do within our footprint was performing arts. And that's a new program that's being launched next semester, I'm sorry, next fall. But we're in conversations with Dave Lykins and Red Rocks High School to look at their facility to offer some of those programs. And we'll also be talking to Mingus High School as well about utilizing their facilities. Because the truth of the matter is, we can do more if we do it together. So those conversations have to continue. Thanks. I'll open it up for questions.
Questions, Council? Can we get the lights turned on, please?
I had a question.
I move through that pretty fast, so.
Yeah, go ahead. You stated that there were some recommendations made by VVBAC. Can we have information what those were?
Yeah, I do. Some of them were to look at increased articulations, two-plus-two programs to four-year universities. It's an interesting process that takes place. The universities, bless their heart, want to work with the community colleges. But a lot of times, what happens is our program areas won't necessarily match up directly with their program areas. And what happens is, it actually drills down at the university level to the department level, where a faculty will say, well, I'll take this class for this class, or we won't, but we'll take it as an elective. And what we're trying to do is leverage what we're doing here at the community college to say, we want two-plus-two programs, which means you take a block of 60, no matter what, and it rolls up into them being a junior at the university, and then they finish out their upper-level 300, 400-level courses. And in some cases, with NAU right now, we're looking at a three-plus-one for nursing, which means they can do three years at the community college at a reduced rate and then finish up one year at the universities. So it's more of those sorts of things. Another thing that they wanted us to focus on was more career and technical education in the Verde Valley. So again, working with Bob Weir and VACT and really doing a data analysis of the low-hanging fruit, which is what is already here. And then in looking at and working with, whether it be Casey Rooney and his group or Steve Ayers in Camp Verde, to really look at their economic plans and how can we be a partner in that and help if we need to create a workforce for those sectors.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah, it sounds like, as you were reciting the different things you're looking at, that you really have listened to the community and you really are working toward what you've been asked to do.
Well, I think so. I think one of the issues that colleges grapple with is continual feedback and having a mechanism for continual feedback. You know, when I came to the Verde Valley campus, one of the first things I asked was, you know, where's the strategic plan? Well, we had never had a strategic plan. And so now that we've got one in place, we've incorporated some of those recommendations. What happens now then is, as part of my Executive Dean's Advisory Committee, is looking at those, measuring success, shifting as we need to, because that's a living document. And then really, in three to possibly five years, we look at, okay, how are we going to kind of do a big push, whether it's reformation of a group or whatever to get more feedback so it goes into the next strategic plan? We probably could have done a better job of that, but it's, you know, that's kind of part of the, part of how you work things. You figure out what works and what doesn't.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next presentation is Cottonwood Historic Home Tour Event scheduled for November 12, 2016.
Madam Mayor, Council, thank you for having us here this evening. I'm Ryan Bigelow. I'm wearing my Historic Preservation Commission hat this evening. And you've got Mr. Tim Malinsky, the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. We're here tonight to discuss the Third Annual Cottonwood Historic Home and Building Tour. It will once again coincide with the Walking on Main event on Saturday, November 12. This year, we've decided to adjust the time slot a little bit and maybe from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, a little bit earlier. Granted, our attendees tend to be a little bit earlier than the women folks. This is a self-guided tour that showcases a lot of Cottonwood's earliest homes and businesses. One addition, we do have this year's, we're trying to offer some transportation. The theme of this year's event is the UVX Clemensaw area. So we have the old superintendent's house, UVX ore bins, and the administrative buildings for the UVX. So that's all up in the Clemensaw area. So we're going to help out with some transportation, though it is still self-guided. This year, we have our own dedicated website, cottonwoodhome tour dot org. We also have our own Facebook page, so we have a little bit more presence online. A lot of our information can be found at cottonwoodhome tour dot org. Some of that information includes how you might go about sponsoring the event. We're always looking for sponsors. The proceeds to this, for the home tour, go to the matching grant program, which you guys have graciously approved, where we take landmark properties and they're able to apply through the Planning and Zoning Department. And we look at approving, the Historic Preservation Commission looks to approve those and try to help provide some incentive to become landmarked and to try to help local business owners and/or homeowners make improvements on their historic properties. What else you can find on that website? Information about volunteering. You of course, always need volunteers for something like this. We're looking for two to three dozens at each of our 10 locations. So we're always looking for a little additional support, just like the mitzvah folks. Everybody's looking for help. So if anybody is interested in doing that, they can find our contact information at that cottonwoodhome tour dot org or find our Facebook page and reach out that way. The event is growing. In 2014, we had 70-plus attendees. Last year, we had 113 attendees. The goal this year is to hopefully reach about 150. If we do reach that 150 and we do get the sponsorship we anticipate, the goal is to raise over $3,000 for this matching grant program. Last year's event made over $2,400 for the matching grant program. And that included a lot of upfront costs for the event last year with signage and things that we'll be able to reuse again this year. The goal was more attendees and less costs upfront. We hope to be able to raise over $3,000 for the matching grant program.
Great.
What do I miss? I just want to speak. Madam Mayor and members of the council, thanks a lot for allowing us the opportunity. My name is Tim Malinsky. I'm the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. Just as a bit of background, 100 years ago here in Cottonwood is when UVX, United Verde Extension, purchased land here in Cottonwood with the intention of building the smelter, which really forever changed Cottonwood. It took us away from being an agricultural community into more of a mining, industrial community and really killed agriculture in the area. So that was 100 years ago in 1916. So this is really the 100-year anniversary of UVX's impression on Cottonwood. And it's interesting now that we're sort of getting back to our agricultural roots here in Cottonwood. So Glenda Farley, who's a commission member, she's put together these wonderful boards. There'll be many dozens of these throughout the locations for the home tour. And it'll really tell you the story about how Cottonwood changed from being an agricultural community into really an industrial megaplex. And we have buildings on the tour like the Clemensaw Plaza that we've seen it 100 times as folks that live here. And we drive by the Clemensaw Plaza where Vinny's Pizza is now. But nobody really understands why the building is shaped the way it is. It's frankly, it's an odd-shaped building. Those were the ore bins where they would store the ore. They would ride them in on the rail cars. Anyway, we have lots of pictures and great information, so I really encourage everyone to attend this year's event. We desperately need volunteers. I wouldn't say desperately, but. We're not worried about it. But one thing Ryan didn't mention, if you do volunteer, you get a free lunch. So just keep that in mind.
So there is such a thing as a free lunch?
There is. Well, you have to work for it. We have members of the council that have volunteered in years past and I believe they enjoy themselves. And certainly, if you want to sponsor the home tour this year, we had about a dozen, I believe, sponsors last year. I believe, sponsors last year. These are local businesses that came forward to sponsor the event. This year, we're stepping it up a little bit because we have a Facebook page and a website. So your sponsorship dollars, your, your, your name will appear on our website basically for an entire year as a sponsor of the home tour, in addition to, you know, other ways that we can get your, the name of your business out there. And as Ryan mentioned, it, all the money circulates again right here in our local economy, helps fix up older homes, and, you know, you can feel good about that as well.
So tell us again, for people, the public on television, how may they volunteer? Who would they contact?
Yeah, cottonwoodhome tour dot org has all the contact information.
Okay, so just the website, the new website?
Go to the website and check that out. If nothing else, I'm going to volunteer the Planning and Zoning Department to have their phone number out there. They're, they're so graciously involved in this as well.
Okay.
I think they'll be volunteering some of their time, too.
So if someone doesn't have access to the internet, they can call Planning and Zoning, and that number is?
Six-three-four-five-five-zero-five.
Six-three-four-five-five-zero-five.
I think. That's my, is that right?
Yes, that's correct. If you would like to volunteer, we're looking for volunteers. It's November 12th, from?
Nine to four.
Nine to four. And so if you could even volunteer a few hours, or do you need them from nine to four?
We'll, we'll sneak you in. Whatever you can do, we'll get you.
Whatever you can do, if you can volunteer a few hours?
And if you can't volunteer the day of the event as well, we, for example, the superintendent's home up on Willard, we need to kind of spruce that up a little bit before the event because it's been vacant for a while, it's for sale. So if you want to, you know, dust cobwebs?
So, okay, if you want to help with some of the properties that will be shown, you could do, you could volunteer in advance. Okay.
And I guess for volunteers, too, some of their fears are that they don't know the history. We provide all the research for the volunteers, so we'll try to get that to you, volunteer at least a week, and then, you know, them kind of read up on it, ask some questions, so they feel a little more comfortable, more confident when they're talking about the property.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Sounds like another, and this is the third, right? Another exciting home tour.
It's amazing sometimes. I, I volunteered with Tim the first year, I believe, and then the next year I got the flu. But people that come in to look at the homes also give you more history on it because they've been here all their lives. And so they've got even more history than what we've got. They start telling us about the homes.
They're excited about that.
It's really, really a lot of fun and talking to people and just showing off our community. Thanks for doing that.
You're very welcome. And, and most of the people that attend this home tour are locals. I think we had about seventy percent last year were, were local Verde Valley residents. And we do, you know, a little, a couple, few different things, different than other home tours across the state. Last year, we had the ditch on the tour, which was great. A lot of people wouldn't think of a ditch as being very exciting, but it was actually the, the star of the show. This year, we're, we have the cemetery on the home tour, so we got the Youth Commission involved, and they're going to be taking over the personalities of dead people in our cemetery, so you can learn, learn about some of the local residents and the savory or unsavory characters that we've had here.
That'll be interesting, yeah. All right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is Game Changer Award from the Matforce to the Cottonwood Police We have Mary Lee Fowler and Angelo Lozano.
And Susan Lockard from the Verde Valley Steering Committee.
Okay.
So thank you so much, Mayor Jones and council members, for this opportunity to say thank you to the Cottonwood Police Department for all that they do on behalf of Matforce. We decided about a year ago that we wanted to give special recognition to individuals who did great work in Yabapai County. And, you know, we, the Board of Directors of Matforce was talking a couple months ago about, you know, our police officers and how much we appreciate them and all that they do for us. And so we just thought, instead of one individual, we wanted to recognize every single police officer in Yabapai County and say thank you, because they definitely are game changers. And I'm very thankful for Commander McCouch and for Chief Gazelle for being here today. Chief Gazelle actually carried out the big box of cups, because there's several of them. But I, I just want to read what the tag says. The, the cup says, "I make a difference," Mat, Game Changer Award, and then Matforce. And it says, "Thank you for serving our communities, keeping us safe, and for your daily acts of courage and kindness, and for all you do to address substance abuse in Yabapai County." And we're very thankful. And City Manager Doug Bartosz is the Chair of Matforce and has been since its inception, and I think he wanted to just say something also.
Well, when Mary Lee brought this up at the board, I was initially very against it. No, I just, I'm just kidding. But obviously, I think we always try to recognize people who have an impact on preventing substance abuse in our county. And we thought, one of the groups that has the greatest impact is our police departments. And certainly, with some of the attacks they've been under here lately, I think it was time to, to just recognize them, and the board fully agreed with that decision. So Mary Lee is actually spending time going to every police department, sheriff's department around the county, representing Matforce and recognizing police officers. So our thanks to her as well, but obviously, tons of thanks to our, our own police officers and all of those who keep us safe.
So would you like to, why don't you, why don't you come up here and give those cups, so that Mary can take your photo? Can you all squeeze together a little bit more, maybe? Kind of turn toward the center a little bit? There you go.
There you go.
And the center can just stay.
Mayor Jones and Council, I just want to take just a brief second to add my own commentary to just what a phenomenal organization and a blessing Matforce is to this community. And the short time that I've been here, I've been here ten months now, and I've had these conversations with, with Doug. As Mary Lee mentioned, she, he is one of the original co-founders of Matforce, as many of you know. And one of the first events I went to was the ten-year anniversary of Matforce. It was attended by, I want to say there was at least three hundred and fifty people there on the other side of the hill. And just, I was in awe. I mean, I really was. And it's very, very clear to see that Matforce is not only an asset to this community in combating drug abuse, and particularly as of late, the opioid crisis that is sweeping the nation and is impacting us here in Yabapai County. Just, just a phenomenal asset, but also a model, both in the state of Arizona and nationally, that we have organizations continually taking a look at Matforce to see if they can replicate that for their own community. So Doug, I want to thank you, and Mary Lee, I want to thank you as well for your ten years of service. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, and continuing on, we have an introduction and review of the new Cottonwood Police Department Smartphone Application by Chief Gazelle.
All right. We figured, since everyone else has an app, we're gonna get one, too. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna start this like I'm going to end it. And if you, if you're watching at home or you're in the audience and you want to go to the Google Play Store or the App Store, the app that we're gonna talk about is free. All you do is type in Cottonwood Police Department, and you too can have the app. So I've got it here on my smartphone. My trusted commander, Jody McCouch, who put this PowerPoint together, which is part of your council packet, is gonna scroll through here so the viewers can get a visual of what it looks like.
And also, this is on the city's website and included in the packet for anybody that wants to access it at any time.
Phenomenal. So what you see, it's, it's very simple. If I can use it, anyone can. So you start off and we, there's a number of tiles or buttons that you see there, and the first one, upper left, we'll start there, is the Contact Us button. When you touch that, you can get all of our contact information. We'll hyperlink, you can touch it, and it'll dial our non-emergency number. And I can tell you that police departments across the United States, including the Cottonwood Police Department, has a perennial issue of people calling 911 with non-emergency calls for service, which is certainly a public safety issue. Here, we estimate about fifty percent of our calls to 911 are, should have been directed to our non-emergency line instead, which puts other lives at risk, so we'd like to mitigate that as much as we can. So we're gonna try with this one to provide every opportunity for someone to have that phone number readily available at the touch of the button. Second one is Submit a Tip. This one, quite frankly, is just another way for our citizenry to communicate with us. They can either add their, their contact information if they want us to call them back or get in contact with them, or they can provide an anonymous tip if there's something going on that they don't see, that they see is not right. And we do encourage people to contact us. Probably, one of the most frequent comments I've received over my career is, "Should we call when?" Because I should, you know, I thought about it, but I didn't. And we always encourage people, if, if you're at that point, please call us. This gives you another opportunity. If it's nothing urgent or not an emergency, you can submit a tip through the, through the app. The third button is for feedback, and that's on the service, and we do call it customer service, as odd as that may seem sometimes. Our customer service is very, very important to us, that we're delivering the highest quality of service. And this button will provide citizens, if you've been, got a voluntary contact of any, any type with a police officer or any member of our staff, dispatcher, records, clerk, it doesn't matter who, you'll have the opportunity to go on here and, you know, it can be a critical, it can be critical feedback, or it can be positive praise, either one. Fourth tab is our link to our Neighborhood Officer Program, which was an initiative we rolled out several months ago. If you can recall, we've divided the city up into nine, what we call neighborhoods. Each neighborhood has a officer that has ownership over that neighborhood for continuing community problems, or if you want to know the officer that has ownership in your area, it's listed on this app with a hyperlink as their name, and will take you straight to their email. Just another avenue to contact the police department. It goes beyond just calling the non-emergency number and talking to someone which can be intimidating over the phone, and getting an officer or two officers that you don't know, and the next time you call, you'll get two more that you don't know. Certainly will not replace the, the need for people to call and schedule to have an officer take a report, because as you can imagine, a lot of these neighborhood officers, or all of them, quite frankly, are on rotating shifts. So your neighborhood officer may not be working the day that you want to get a hold of them. So if you need to file a report, use the non-emergency number. The next one is just a button on school safety. Talks about what the, our school safety officer does. As you know, we contribute a police officer to the, to Dominguez Union High School. He also serves some of the feeder schools as well. Talks about that program. The next one, I think a lot of people that have interest in what's going on in the city, particularly in the cop shop, will, will like this one, is we plan on putting all of our significant media releases. So every, everything you see in the news, we send to the media via a media release, and we will post all the significant ones on here, so you can scroll through and find it, if you are so inclined. Next one is a simply social media. We have our own Facebook page. We do not use Twitter as of yet, and we're still taking a look at that, but I'm doubting that we'll go that direction. The next one is a really cool application, and it is, it's called My Property. And this one allows the, the person that has the app to kind of record a record, a visual and a descriptor of their valuables, serial numbers and photos. And that can be saved on here. In the event that you're burglarized or they're stolen, you have that record, and there's a mechanism where you can send that straight to us to add to your report and help us recover your property, is generally speaking. Without it, it's very, very difficult to recover property, particularly items that don't have serial numbers. We're having some issues with the vendor that we're working out. The Send button doesn't work currently, but we expect that to be rectified momentarily. The next one is a link to the Sex Offender Map. Anyone that has any concern or just wants to know where all the registered sex offenders are in our community, they can go to that map. The next button is FAQs, just a number of questions that we routinely get asked that citizens may find helpful. Next one is just a number of safety tips, everything from, hey, how should I, how should I behave at the ATM, cyber safety tips for kids and parents, all the way down to telemarketing tips. The last button, and I'll get out of your way, I know you've got a very busy council agenda, is a bunch of helpful links, and those will, you know, we'll add them as we think of them, or they're suggested to us, to help our citizens connect with our partner agencies and services that promote public safety in the city of Cottonwood. We're went tour, do you have any questions?
Any questions, council members, or comments?
Comment? While the chief was talking, I downloaded the app. It took less than sixty seconds, and so absolutely get it on your phone.
And I'm sure that you know this, but you can just have Twitter just post whatever you're posting on Facebook, too. And you don't have to actually make any posts, but I'm sure I'm not telling you anything you haven't already analyzed.
It's good you say that, because we, this is a beta for us. We'll see, because there is a cost associated to it. The, the rollout of this was paid through, I think, your local drug dealer for, through forfeiture funds, so the taxpayers are not paying for this in the first year. Thank you, all those that are out there that contributed. However, we'll run this for a year, and then we'll gauge the number of downloads that it gets. We haven't rolled it out officially to the media until tonight. It's kind of, kind of a backwards rollout of sorts, but it's all contemporaneous, and we did, we did advertise it, our National Out, recently, which, as you guys know, is the largest in the state of Arizona. We had over eighteen hundred people there.
Wow, congratulations.
Before I understand, we, thank you, we had quite a few downloads. So please, again, it's free, Google App Store, or the, I'm sorry, the Google App Store, I've combined two companies, the App Store or the Google Play Store, it's free, and we hope you download it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the next item called to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action per ARS 3843102H. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak about an item that is not on the agenda tonight? If not, we'll close the floor to the public and move to the approval of the minutes. Any corrections or discussion? I, I actually had one thing here. It said in the summary of current events, it said that Mayor Jones stated Councilmember Norman was also there, and this made nine years. She had volunteered for the Project Wet project. And actually, if you would just change one word, "she" to Ms. Norman, so otherwise they wonder whether I volunteered for nine years, which I did not, or whether Mayor Norman volunteered. So just one, one word.
Mayor Norman?
Oh.
Ms. Norman.
Am I trying to, like, divest myself?
It's gross to me.
Yes, it is. I'll just move down the rest of the council at some point. Okay, so it's the regular meeting of October 4th, 2016. I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the minutes of October 4th, 2016.
Second.
Vice Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Allen seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item number one, renewal of contract with standard printing company for utility bill printing and mailing services. Item number two, renewal of contract with the SRE Transportation for Bio-Solids Hauling Services. Item number three is lease extension for the Old Town Jail Building located at 1101 North Main Street. Item number four is renewal of the final one-year contract extension with accurate building maintenance for citywide custodial services. Item number five is contract number 2017405D005 with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety for overtime expenses incurred by the Cottonwood Police Department during DUI Task Force Patrol and checkpoints. Item number six is contract 20017PT014 with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety to provide funds for overtime expenses incurred by the Cottonwood Police Department for selective traffic enforcement patrol, which is also, which also stands for STEP Details. Are there any items that a council member would like to pull from the agenda for discussions? Are there any items that a member of the public would like to pull from the agenda for specific discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Councilmember Howdige made the motion, and Councilmember Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, new business. How many people are here to, who want to discuss the Thunder Valley Rally Event? Raise your hand. Okay. I had a request to move that up to the beginning of the new business. Does anyone in the audience or on council object to that? Okay, if not, we'll move that up to the next item review of the 2016 Thunder Valley Rally Event. event. And hang on just a second. So we have Richard Faust and Hezekiah Allen.
Coming in.
Who will be leading the discussion of this event.
Thanks for your time this evening. Madam Mayor, thanks for pushing ups up a little bit. Staff wanted to meet with council at the conclusion or kind of after Thunder Valley Rally to give council a recap of kind of how the program went from staff's side, more importantly, the financials. So this is kind of why we called this meeting today. First of all, Thunder Valley Rally would not be possible without the dedication of the Thunder Valley Rally Committee members who work year-round to put this program together. They're made up of local riders, individuals past and prior that were on the city council, folks that are stakeholders within the industry who own motorcycle shops and Harley-Davidson dealerships. So we feel like we have a really well-rounded and dedicated group that runs this program that gives staff direction on where to go with entertainment and marketing and things like that, that only folks within the industry would really understand and grasp. In addition to that, we also have some kind of ad hoc members. For example, other communities, Clarkdale, Jerome, individuals on staff, Commander McCouch, Chief Kirkendall, those individuals are vital for giving information on their specific areas of responsibility, but also helping us to procure and continue on with one of our goals of building relationships throughout the region, so. First, the rally goals and objectives for this year, the committee wanted to run, operate a smooth, safe and economic impactful event, grow attendance by 10%, obtain additional arts go sponsors by 10%, so increase the amount of money that we had received previously by 10% going into the 2016 year, develop more quantitative analysis measures determining performance standards. So when we say the total attendees for Thunder Valley Rally is this number, we wanted to develop more ways to accurately really depict that number. Close the debt loss gap by 50%. Diversify offered programs and attractions by adding fiscally responsible events. That also really falls in line with developing partnerships throughout the Verde Valley. We realize this program is growing, but it also needs to grow to different communities. It needs to grow to, for example, Verde Valley Fairgrounds, which it did this year. And they're looking to do additional programs in conjunction with Thunder Valley Rally in the future, so. We also know from 2015, things we needed to work on were perfected parking issues, transportation and the restaurants. And then diversify and add revenue sources. We always get interesting letters for Thunder Valley Rally, some positive, some not so positive. These are two individuals that, one is from Alberta, Canada, and she's looking to attend the 2017 Thunder Valley Rally and is already asking for dates because they want to plan their vacation to Arizona around this event. Another one is from an individual from Las Vegas who's also wanting to plan their vacation to Arizona and he's coming with a large group and they're wanting to know dates for 2017. Now the five-year plan, keep in mind that the committee is in the, this year was the second year of the five-year plan. So the first year, the committee basically took the program model as it was from when the promoters had it and continued using 2015 as kind of the baseline, get an understanding where the numbers are at, where the attendees are, what marketing sources work the best, really to gain understanding. So in 2016, we wanted to grow attendance, continue to grow in regards to traffic-driving national acts. That's the balance of do you get one big one on Friday, one smaller one on Saturday? Do you get classic rock bands? Do you get country bands? There's a lot of variables in your choosing of entertainment. Usually, when you choose entertainment, everything else falls in line, sponsors fall in line, location, production, and all that kind of stuff starts fitting together. And then the biggest proponent of the word of mouth, marketing, is the entertainment you have. We've found that. Expand to two to three full days, this is five years, and the hopes to do that is not necessarily, the committee's not thinking in Old Town, expand to three full days or two full, two full days, still keep it the day and a half in Old Town, but maybe the fairgrounds picks some things up on Wednesday, leading into Friday. Maybe Camp Verde decides to do some things that week. Take advantage of the people that are coming to the Verde Valley and that's how the committee's thinking on growing this event throughout the week. That also has more of a regional impact, because there's more people staying in hotels, spending money on a daily basis. Attract national vendors. One of the things we got hit on last year is that they didn't feel we had large enough vendors. So in the future, the goal is to start attracting those vendors. So basically, you have Drag Specialties Truck and you have some other big, large vendors that hit large rallies throughout the entire year. So they're planning five years in advance on where these trucks are going to go throughout the state. Develop a staggered growth plan that anticipates outgrowing Old Town. And the thoughts on that are, while there's not 10,000, 8,000 people on the street at one time with this event, it's spread out through a day and a half. In the future, if Old Town continues to burgeon, a lot of people are down here, do we pull the main stage and put it at the Kids' Park and keep vendors down in Old Town? So the committee's constantly thinking about that. How do we prepare? How do we keep the program growing? How do we not tarnish the brand in any way? How do we make sure that the relationships with the merchants in Old Town are protected and valued? So there's a lot that takes place within understanding that. These are the 2016 sponsors, sorry, it says 2015 on the top. These are the folks that invest in this program and they invest capital, cash. In 2015, total sponsors dollars, now this is dollars to the program, was $14,500. In 2016, it was $21,500. We saw a pretty significant increase in cash sponsors. And that, we feel that's really predicated on the fact that the program's growing and people throughout the state understand what it is. Now I'll go through kind of the revenues by source, so you can understand where we were in 2015 compared to this year. So vendor collections in 2015, we collected $7,275. In 2016, we collected $13,250. Some of that is the work that the committee did, raising fees here and there, massaging some things, creating more space in certain areas. We added a few food vendors this year, noting that we didn't want to add a lot, because we obviously don't want to take business away from merchants in Old Town. So it was very strategic on how that was laid out, but we basically saw a 90% increase in our vendor fees. And the interesting part about that is that staff didn't go door-to-door to vendors. These are phone calls that booked out three or four months in advance that are already on the book for next year. Poker run numbers, 2015, we saw 350 riders at $6,740. In 2016, we saw $8,440 with 423 riders. It's a 25% increase. One of the interesting things that the committee did with this is we added another alternate kind of wild card stop where if you, and it allowed us to add the Verde Valley Fairgrounds to the route. So 423 people are riding through the Verde Valley and spending money, basically, is what it comes down to. And then the last stop was the fairgrounds before they came down to Old Town. So we didn't necessarily increase the price of the poker run, you could still pay the $20 to $25, but what we did is added another stop. So people just did it because they wanted the other stop and the opportunity, so we will raise revenues there as well. Merch sales, we saw a slight decrease this year from 11, you know, $11,000 to $12,000 down to $10,000 to $11,000, 10-4. We don't really have any real answers on why that is. We feel like we took the vendor, the merch area out of, we had it in the old, the Civic Center last year and down by the main stage. This year, we put it by the tavern, the tavern lot and main stage. We know traffic down by the main stage was low during the day and we think that might have something to do with it, but still good numbers for a day and a half. So those are t-shirts, hats and patches. Bar sales collections in 2015, now this is cash that the city takes in. After the 25% of gross goes to the Old Town Association, after all the bills are paid, everything's done, this is what we take in, this is a net. So in 2015, we did 11,000 and some change. 2016, we did 13,000 and some change. The interesting part of that number is that total bar revenue was down in 2016. Lot of variables why, there was a new bar down by the main stage area, but we were able to increase our revenues because we lowered our expenditure, so much so that variably it offset it. Here's the part that really blew the TBR committee out of the water. We tried on our pro forma to make our predictions really, really low. So motorcycle bans on our pro forma, we estimated $20,000. 2,000 motorcycles at $10. We had $23,753 that we took in on motorcycle bans. Concert bans, we figured $5,000. Concert bans and motorcycle bans. So the difference is motorcycle bans, the band gets, the bike gets banded, both people on the bike get banded and they get access to the concerts. So there's no overlap in that money. Concert passes are for those folks who drove down, walked down, wanted to attend the concert. And we did $14,232. That's $5 per person. So that tells you kind of how many people just attended the concert. Another revenue source that was added this year was the charity split. Basically, all the charities, because they have the opportunity and Thunder Valley Rally endorses them, they give a percentage back to the event. So that was $2,162.63. This is kind of how we got our attendance numbers this year. So sold motorcycle bans, that's total what we took in, divided by 10, and then times it by 1.7, because you've got one or two riders per bike. Came out to 4,038. Sold concert passes, 2,967 guests. Non-paid estimate, because you have people that walk down for the event, they don't necessarily pay, bikes that you miss, estimate around 1,500 for a total of 8,505 people that were here in a day and a half that visited the Verde Valley. Shuttle numbers for 2015, we had 1,300 people ride the shuttle. In 2016, we had 1,611 people ride the shuttle. So it's continuing to grow. This is one of those areas where the TBR committee really prides itself on. So basically, in a day and a half, $34,127.49 were raised for local charities. It's a very giving crowd. Pwana, $740 cheerleaders. The cheerleader at Flip City, they do, and I think she may be here today, they do a very interesting program to where they do childcare for locals who want to go down to the program. And that's how they raise money. And they did, they raised $1,200.
Wow.
The Verde Valley Fairgrounds went from 12 reservations in 2015 to 38 to 40 reservations in 2016. And those are RVs. Okay, here are the finances. You see 2015, revenues of $66,000 and some changes, it's cash in, cash out, sales tax not included. Expenditures were 174 and there's your adjusted net. 2016, managerial accounting, basically, we have our records, finance has their records. What we have now is revenues at $104,000, expenditures at $140,000. The investment is $36,183.50. So that was the hard cash dollars for the city of Cottonwood. That includes staffing, includes everything. Finance to date, those are the numbers they have collected. For example, the bar money of $13,000 is still being processed and some other things that are still coming in. So those are the differences there. If you look at a benefit cost analysis, so estimating sales tax at around $40,000, you can say 30,000 to 40,000, and revenue $104,000 and cost at $140,000, we're in the positive at $3,000 for this program. TBR economic impact study, we're still waiting for the total study from NAU, but we're able to kind of get some preliminary rough numbers from them for the economic impact. So sample population, 100 plus, some roughly respondents, population of 8,505 attendees. Unit analysis is obviously the program attendees and then just random sampling on how we get the surveys. So it's interesting to see how the two years are starting to kind of stack up a little bit. So in 2015, basically, we had about 64.7% of all visitors were out-of-towners. And then in 2016, it was about the same, 64, 65%. So that's who we're seeing and, and yes, you take a sample population and you try to apply it to a larger population, there's a lot of math that's way over my head to get to those two things, but it's nice to see two years in a row where the data is pretty similar on out-of-town visitors. And that's really where your money comes from for economic impact. It's those individuals coming from Maricopa County, from Colorado, Canada, whoever, outside money coming in. So TBR regional impact, because we're able to get more narrowed in on what our actual population was for the event of 8,505 people, last year we estimated at 7,000 to 10,000 people. We didn't have very many, we didn't have a lot of variables to measure it based upon, but we actually weren't too far off. So total economic impact is basically $1,312,000 for this day and a half. That's regional-wide, Verde Valley-wide. Interesting to note, we have three ATMs in Old Town that we bring in for the event. In 2015, they dispersed $20,000 cash in Old Town. In 2016, they dispersed $25,600. And then from our understanding, there's some hotels in the area down in Old Town, the Iron Horse Hotel has an ATM machine and it dispersed $7,000 in 2016. So that's in addition to the $25,600 that our ATMs dispersed. Are there any questions?
Any comments, questions?
I'll make a comment.
Okay.
In fact, you went from 108 to 36,000 for our cost to the city. It was remarkable. I mean, that was, your board committee did a remarkable job to split that and get that down that low.
You guys did a great job.
You did an amazing job. You really did.
They did. Thank you for that. It's appreciated.
A lot more positive than the last year.
A lot more.
Well done. Job well done.
Okay, so we do have a citizen, Trevor Gotczak, who would like to talk about the TBR item.
Hello, my name is Trevor Gotczak and I am here representing myself as an Old Town business owner and resident. After the most recent TBR, I felt again compelled to address the council on how this event affects me and my business. I approached dozens of other Old Town businesses to see how the event affects them. Despite the newspaper articles and in council chambers conversation, I found many businesses feel as I do, that the event should be moved out of Old Town. The following is a letter representing the feelings of myself and many other Old Town businesses, who I will list at the end. Madam Mayor and city council members, this letter is intended to inform the council and public of our position on the Thunder Valley Rally event put on by the city of Cottonwood. As business owners, we hope, feel holding this event in Old Town negatively impacts our businesses and our regular customers. During the event, a portion of us see reduced sales, so much that some of us choose to close. For others, it cuts off access for business activity such as shipping and receiving. For others, it cuts off access for business activity such as shipping and receiving. Others have made huge efforts to capture the possible sales, but in the end, it does not end up being worth the time, effort, and capital risk to our businesses. Holding this event in Old Town is not a good fit. Before voting to continue Thunder Valley Rally, to continue Thunder Valley Rally, we would like to have a discussion about moving it. Old Town would still play a role should the location be moved, as it would give those attendees that wish to see our historic district a chance to see it for what it really is, rather than a backdrop of closed storefronts or businesses who substantially changed their identity to accommodate the event. And those attendees who have no interest in shopping would not be trapped on the street in front of our stores, but would be at the TBR location, enjoying the vendors, food, beer, music, and bikes, while our regular customers still have access to their favorite Old Town stores. The bottom line is, Old Town is not just an event venue. It is a business district full of excited entrepreneurs and business owners who work hard to make Cottonwood a great place to visit, as well as a great place to live, and this event hinders our ability to do so. Despite the renaissance that Old Town is experiencing, owning a business here like anywhere is still a risky proposition, and the last thing you need from the city is something that reduces our opportunity to succeed. Please move the event to another location so we can continue to effectively run our businesses. Sincerely. Old Town Frame Company, Bootleggers, All Things Creative, Jim and Ellen's Rock Shop, Cart Wheels Gallery, Magenta, Verde Valley Olive Oil Traders, Heart of Arizona Gallery, Old Town Flower Shop, Dragonfly Gallery, Hippie Emporium, Adriana's Mexican Food, Crema Craft Kitchen, Cottonwood Hotel, Arizona Stronghold, Old Town Cafe, Betty's Attic, Tavern Grill, Tavern Hotel, Old Town Pepper Company, Chef Wayne's Creations, Barter Inn, Little Moose Gourmet Market, Iron Horse Inn, Pillsbury Wine Company, Red Rooster Cafe, Red Geranium Boutique, Bocchi, Desert Diamond Distillery, Fire Mountain Wines, Nyx, Paradise Point, Paz on Main, the most interesting store in the world, Papillon Antiques, Sun Silver West, Riot, Studio Z, Leadbetter Law Firm, Spirit Rising Yoga, Small Batch Wine and Spirits, and Fentech Industries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Questions?
Feel free to answer them on my behalf. I won't speak for the others at that point.
Do you have copies of that letter, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you for your comments and your letter. So council, discussion on this item. I would go ahead and ask, is there anyone else from the, from the public who would want to speak on this item?
If I can speak for a moment. I spoke to some of the vendors, so I was very surprised some of their names were on this list, because they were very pleased with the event and the money they were getting. So I'm a little confused that their name is on this list at this point.
Do you want me to address that?
No, I'm going to go ahead and make a statement. I did contact some vendors. I walked down, this is the first year that I've been able to attend it. My hubby got a motorcycle and was 12 again. But yeah, we really enjoyed it. The people were polite, but I did talk to a few vendors, and some were very understanding. Some knew they weren't going to make a lot of money, because it wasn't their kind of event, but they said, but they'll come back. They'll come back, and at that point, then they'll be attending my business. They understood that it's not going to be, it's not always about them, and I really appreciated that, because that's their livelihood. So they have one day that's a little bit lower than normal, and they know they're going to have people come back, which I was pleased to see that a business owner recognized that's kind of the purpose of the event, or the city, to have these people come back when the event is no longer going on. Another vendor that I stopped and spoke to tripled her business on Friday. She said she had not thought she would ever get that, and that was on Friday, that's her more quiet day. So I understand the concerns of the Old Town vendors, and they definitely will be addressed, and I'll probably speak to many of them myself from this list, to get a little bit more personal information and know what's going on. But I just wanted to give you my experience when I came down that weekend and what happened.
There were a couple of businesses that, and one of them was Adriana's, and the Hippie Emporium, who get cut out completely because...
Where it dropped was...
They stopped. That's it. So they do nothing.
And I think that's a learning experience for HES, because I know one year, the Rose Tea Boutique was totally blocked off by the stage. This year, they were given access, and they had much more activity at their business. So I think that's a learning curve for HES to try to address that, and it's excellent that you're giving that information, so that they can be a part of the event.
Well, I do feel we need to have a conversation on this period. I mean, that's one of the things we brought up when we had the meeting prior, when was that meeting we had about the TBR? We had it down at the...
The rec center.
The rec center. Right there. We had mentioned that as something that we should be looking into. So, you know, I guess, go ahead.
So, Madam Mayor, Council, so in 2015, it was brought on the agenda whether or not to continue the event, and council had voted six to one to continue the program, and yes, Councilwoman Kyle Island, you're so correct. Staff learns every year on how we can help and work with different businesses, but by no means does every business in Old Town do well. We can't report that. But where staff is willing to work with everybody and do the best we can to help them out. We actually met with Adriana's. So we have some things in line for next year to help her out.
Cool. Excellent. Sometimes it seems to me like Old Town merchants don't want any activities, so is, do you want us to just cancel everything? Just not do anything to bring people to the community?
I don't think that's the thing that...
Step forward, so we can...
Mike Anderson, Al Bootlegger Saloon. That's a completely unfair statement.
I'm just expressing what I hear. Meeting after meeting, the activities are not welcome by many Old Town businesses, so why are we doing them? Should we stop?
What activities are you referring to?
Tilted earth, anything that we do down here. I mean, I'm not sure that anybody likes walking on main either.
Well, I just think, I don't remember speaking...
No, I don't ever hear anything good from you all, or positive about the activities that we are, you know, we're expending time with our staff, or we're trying very hard to bring people to the area. What do you want from us?
I'm just going to speak for myself on this. You're, I think that the merchants are being ignored completely before the event. Yes, Hezekiah and the staff, they do walk on, ask, they don't ask in depth. They don't ask afterwards. You know, he talked to me, but I've talked to several merchants along with Trevor, and nobody from the city came on to talk to them and asked what happened and how it's been for us. It's not something that helps the whole town. Walking on main helps the whole town. Chocolate Walk. Events where all the families can come and people can come to, where it's not shut down for the entire day. You know, that's, that's what the town likes. We like the events. But shutting down the business and taking away our regular customers that can come on a regular basis, that do see us every weekend, that come from Payson or Prescott, Camp Verde, wherever, you know, we're shutting that down. And it's also peak season. This is when the season starts for all of us, right now. And we have to, we have to add extra staff. It's extra expense to the merchants. I'm just speaking for me. I'm a saloon, so you'd think I would want to do the best. Well, my sales took a big hit this year. I did exactly, I bought last year, was sold, and this year, didn't work out so well. There were some things that had happened, but it was nothing like, it was more just city involvement. But it was different this year. I give them that. Cleanup was great. The way the ingress, egress coming in, the bikes and everything was fine, but it doesn't help everybody in town. So it's not that we don't welcome the events, I just don't think we welcome this particular event being right in the heart of Old Town. And it does, people who come town, come to town for the first time, think of it now, is this a biker town? And a lot of the businesses here don't appeal to, you know, that crowd. And some of the businesses, if they would all get a chance to come and talk, they'll tell you that they did change their business model, and they're stuck with a bunch of inventory that they can't sell. So they're, you know, that's a loss. It's not a gain. And they had to stay open longer hours to make up for a regular Saturday. They would stay open maybe eight. Someone stayed open 14 hours to make up for some of the loss they had. So I think it's important the city talks to all the merchants, really hears from them. I'm just guessing. So I'm only going to speak for myself, but I think you should talk to all the merchants. Maybe have a special meeting for all the merchants and listen to them.
Okay, and do we not have like monthly meetings where city staff is included in a monthly Old Town meeting?
They're welcome to show up. We can put them on the agenda. But that's the Old Town Association. Not all, not everybody is a member of the OTA.
Right. So what is, all the people that sign this, do you want the city to just stop having events? Is that the request?
No, that's, that's not words.
Because we go to a lot of work.
But that's not what they're saying.
This is, the letter doesn't ask you to stop having an event.
I'm just, no, I'm just...
It clearly states what it says. It says, this event hinders us to do our business. We want an event. We would like to be, we would like to be able to do well for it, the same way the rest of the city and the rest of the community does. Because the rest of the community does well. We're not saying, we're not saying cancel the event. We're saying, in Old Town, it doesn't do a good job. If you were to, if you were to move it somewhere else, the attendees would come to Old Town and see our town. It's great. We do a good job attracting new, different businesses. I mean, that's what the city's been trying to do, is get new vibrant businesses into a broad section, and then all of a sudden, we want, we're asked to change for two days. Every time I approach the city staff, they say, well, either it's just two days, get over it, or why don't you sell t-shirts? Or why don't you do this? And it's offensive to have city officials tell me how I should try to make money with the business that I've already tried really hard to make money at. It's not easy. It's not easy. And two days may seem like not that much, but it's one weekend, fifty-two, and it's really one productive, like one busy weekend of twenty-six. For a lot of people, it's a substantial part of their, I mean, it's their business. And so we love events. Walking on main, you don't hear anybody complaining about walking on main. No one comes to the council meetings.
Yeah, we do. Oh, yeah, we do.
We hear people complain.
Absolutely.
There are merchants that complain about that.
Are there merchants that come to city council meetings and complain about walking on main? In this, in this, we're not, we're not saying cancel events. We do not make everyone happy, but this event in Old Town makes very few businesses in Old Town happy. That's all we're saying. This event in Old Town makes few businesses happy.
Okay.
I'm nothing more than events in Old Town, events that are good for my business.
I have a question then.
Yes, please.
My question is, so the city just turns way around, and it plans this motorcycle event, Thunder Valley Rally, in a new location, and it's not successful, because part of the draw is the quaintness, the awesomeness of Old Town, and so the event fails. And the public spends a lot of money on an event that fails. Then just get rid of it? Is that what you want?
I don't, I don't pay my rent to provide quaintness for an event for, for people that don't particularly, they don't, I don't pay for the quaintness. I don't want to be, in answer, we're not just an event venue. It's not a place where we're all down there working really hard, and so if the event doesn't work, then I would feel bad. I don't think it wouldn't. I, I don't want to get into the specifics of planning an event. I think Old Town should be a participative, closed-off half of the street, a motorcycle park and only, introduce a poker stroll along with it, like Clark did, so people that want to come down and take in the shops, they can actually just see the shops for what they are. And that's, there's lots of opportunity where I think you could get a lot of these businesses to be on board with Thunder Valley Rally, because, because Councilmember Allen said, a lot of people, a lot of people that signed this didn't say, cancel the event, we hate it. They said, yeah, it should be somewhere else. And then the people that want to come down, come down. It wasn't like, I said, I went and I talked to every one of these. Neither me nor Mike engaged in conversation with every one of these merchants, and no one was saying, we don't want the event. With every one of these merchants, I know I didn't vote to all merchants, and there are people that I obviously did not go to, but I knew were in support. I didn't say I'm getting 90%. I'm saying I went to merchants. I know there are merchants that are not, not registered on this list.
I'm getting some shaking heads in the audience saying, no, they didn't, so I'm...
I'm not saying I went to all merchants. I didn't vote Mitch, because if I went to Mitch, we would have had this conversation, he still would have been listening here, it wouldn't have changed my list. I didn't list people for it. I was just looking for support for people who were against it. So if people felt they were left out because I didn't engage them, it was because I already kind of knew where they stood on it. I went to those who I didn't know. I didn't, I wasn't, I never said we got 90%, but this is just a list of merchants. I don't know how many merchants there are, I'm not trying to skew the numbers. These are all people I spoke to who were in agreement.
Not everybody that we talked to.
There was a handful of people that said, I don't want to be on our list, or it did well for me. And I had one, one business member who said, I, you know, it didn't, it did well for me, but you could put me on the list. I said, no, I don't want you on the list, because then it invalidates.
I appreciate that.
So I really was trying to get honest feedback and opinions from other businesses. That was my goal, and my purpose in addressing the council and the public tonight was just to let, I know we talked Hezekiah, and I think Hezekiah gets a lot of feedback, but not all at once. And so this was a way to give the council feedback from the business community all at once about our particular feelings about holding Thunder Valley Rally in Old Town. That's all. That's all. I don't want to cancel events.
Okay, so what you're asking then is, Hezekiah or some of his staff needs to address and visit you all after the event, to get your input for that event. Hezekiah, can you address that?
Madam Mayor, Council, you know, first of all, it's required city policy that staff hand out a closure memo before the event, so we go to each business and do so. We also go to each resident in the Old Town district area and hand out memos. Mike is the president of the Old Town Association, so yes, we do have a lot of discussions on, and trying to get a pulse on what the merchants in Old Town are looking for. And years past, right after the event, we would go to each merchant, and we kind of get the same information each year, and we've learned a lot. In addition to that, we also go to each merchant during the event and say, how are you doing? How was your Friday? How was your Saturday? If staff would like us to go, or if council would like us to go after the event to each merchant as well, we can, we can start that process up again. Please understand, though, it takes a lot of time to do that. We're a small staff.
Yeah, you are a small staff. So Casey Rooney wanted to speak.
I've been putting a list together over the last 10 years that I've been here, and I updated it just recently, and I've got a list of approximately 105 businesses from, basically from one end of Old Town to the other, of the existing town, Old Town. 105 businesses, over, close to 500 employees in Old Town. And I know it's been growing over the last 10 years that I've been here, because 10 years ago, I remember walking around and there were maybe 80 people working down in Old Town. It's, that's a guesstimate. And then a couple of years ago, went up over 200. And now it's over, it's close to 500. So I would suggest, I think Mike had a great idea. Ask all 105 people, don't ask 25 people. That's my suggestion. I've got the list. I'm happy to share it with whoever wants it.
Yes, Mitch?
Thank you for letting me talk. My name is Mitch Levy. I own Burning Tree Sellers. I've talked to some of those people on the list, and they've asked for things to be tweaked a little bit, not that the rally's been done away with, that they were happy with some of the improvements this year over last year, and they see the direction it's going in, but it's not a clear-cut list, we want to get rid of it. I mean, there's events down in Old Town that I don't like anymore. Walking on main's a good example. Three, four years ago was great. Now it's turning into a car show, and nobody goes down to our side of the street, because there's so many cars all the way around the corner. But I know that these people are going to come back. I lose money Thunder Valley Rally weekend. I don't have my typical weekend, but I know it's what's best for the city. It's a day and a half. It's not going to affect my business over the course of a year for a day and a half. And some people are just so close-minded about it, they don't want to say anything. It's, it's either they want it done, or they're going to close their shop, and that's what's a shame, they're not looking at it realistically. And the amount of money that's being spent down there is, all the bars made money, and for people to say that they're in a saloon business and didn't make money, baloney. I challenge them on that.
Anybody else like to speak about this item? Yes.
Council management, my name's Eric Jurison. I own the Tavern Hotel, Tavern Grill, Nyx, Crema, Bocchi, and I've really tried to stay on the fence on this one. I service the motorcycle community, I service the tourist community, I service the locals. I do business at the, 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 the different businesses that are on this board, and I don't want to talk against the event, you know? That list that you saw, that I guess Trevor asked me to sign... That list that you saw, that I guess Trevor asked me to sign, was, "Do you want it in, in Old Town?" And, you know, it's one weekend a year. It's one weekend a year. I keep hearing that. All we're asking is to move it. You know, we bought the buildings. You know, Old Town has come around due to a private-public partnership. Remember those days? You know? We're all still the same community. It's not us and them. We're all the same people, and we're just looking and for another option, and, and another venue. You know, if the, if the City of Cottonwood wants to be in the venue business... And that's really, you know, let's keep in mind what this event is. It's a, a rock concert catering to locals in the motorcycle community that sells beer, T-shirts. I mean, that's, that's what it is. And if the City of Cottonwood wants to put time into that because they think it benefits us, I think about the difference between Jerome and Cottonwood. And, you know, Jerome, we have a biker business. I mean, they line our streets every weekend. Down here in Old Town, we've had this event for multiple years. And, you know, owning the Tavern Grill is probably the, out of all my businesses, that's the one that does best during this, this, um, this event. And I haven't seen, like, more motorcycles through the years down here. I just haven't. I think about it when I walk back and forth. I don't see more motorcycles staying in my hotel necessarily. Um, but maybe they show up in cars, you know, just because you look like a biker one week, you can be in a Rolls Royce the next. You know, you never know who, who is, just because they're a weekend warrior or a gang member. They're all the, they're all just people. And it's not that we're against the event. We're just asking to move it. For me, in my own personal greed, if I had the event somewhere else, say, the park, Riverfront. And they created like the NFL experience and lined up their vendors down there. Put their big stage at the end. They have the pavement, the trees, the grass. You know, probably one of our prettiest spots in town. And all the bikes got to park down there, and all the vendors got to set up. And there's more parking. A lot of, a lot of my customers, um, one of the complaints, and there aren't many complaints. A lot of them just have a good time, is that they can't leave or they lose their parking spot. You know, it's just like I'm a boater, you know, and if you're in Havasu, if you leave the channel, you don't get to come back. It's the same thing at Thunder Valley Rally. If you move your motorcycle, you've lost your parking space because you guys have used up, you know, with all the bikes that are there and the turnout, we've used up the parking. If we had the motorcycles at, at Riverfront and it worked, we would get, for, for me, I'll just use myself and not talk about the other businesses, I would have my locals, I would have the normal tourists, and we would have the bikers in Old Town. We'd have it all. So, there, there's a, a reason why, you know, like, why I signed it. Of course, I would rather it somewhere else for my businesses. And I represent probably a hundred and fifty of those employees. You know, at the end of the day, you know, I represent a third of the employees. Ten years ago, it was quieter, you know? What really changed and brought tourists to Old Town, I would give it to the wine business. You know, I'm reading the logo behind us, the heart of Arizona wine country. And the number-one event we're putting on doesn't even have wine connected to it. You know, where we spent the most money, put in the most time, had the most volunteers, it'd be nice if we could, you know, somehow bring it together. You know, just as a thought with, you know, Eric pulling out of the tilted earth, you know, it'd be nice if there was a way. Just a thought. Thank you.
So, yes, Vice Mayor?
Sitting here listening to all this, I just need to let everyone know that for years, people have come to me and complained that we're putting too much into Old Town. The other businesses around town would like some of the action, so maybe we should think about that, Hes. Maybe we should, um, think about another area for a lot of our activities. Not, not to pull them out and not be vindictive, but we do have more of a town in Cottonwood than just Old Town. And these people have come to me for a long time, asking, "Why doesn't the City of Cottonwood do for the rest of us that they do for Old Town?" I tried to explain to them that the Old Town merchants have brought it up, the wine industry has brought it up. We haven't put that much in it, but they don't see it that way. So, maybe it is time to rethink it and, and move some of the stuff that we do around town so more, more than one area benefits.
And Madam Mayor and Council, and the committee, um, definitely have looked into this. But you have to understand, though, is if you, when you move the event like this, you start from scratch, zero. You know none of the variables, and it's a risk. They're all risk, but it's more so of a risk. At the end of the day, staff will do anything council directs us to do. But we wanna make sure you understand that, um, Old Town is, the event in Old Town has become synonymous. Thunder Valley Rally is known to be an Old Town. It's known to be a Sturgis feel. That's what's caused it to grow so well. That's the feedback we get. We're not opposed to anything. We're open to all, all options, but you have to know that it's gonna take a lot more staff time, a lot more investment, and a lot more critical thinking. And you're, you're not gonna see the return on your investment right away. It's gonna take time to build it wherever you move it to.
And that's what I mentioned, that, you know, you could look at it, but it, you could determine that it might not be as successful. So, um, my thoughts are that staff do an analysis of changing it to another place. And if it's not doable, if you think it's gonna break the bank and we're not gonna make at least break even or close to even, cancel the event.
And I think I agree with you, Mayor. The only thing I would add to that is, is to make sure the committee's involved in that process of making that assessment.
And that was what I was gonna say, and I didn't think of it again. Is we, you know, we have a committee of community members, of people from Old Town that have tried to make it better, tried to hear the merchants. But, you know, I, I've been the mayor for nine years and on, I've been serving the citizens of Cottonwood for thirteen years. And it's the same old, same old on almost every event, is nobody's happy. And I'm just to the point now, and probably lucky I'm not gonna be your mayor, because I'm just like here with that. I wanna listen to the public. I wanna hear your, your, and I realize people aren't gonna agree. But what, we're beating our heads against the wall, and what for? Just over and over, nothing is good enough. I mean, there are many businesses that aren't here that probably do benefit, hotels. I guess the restaurant industry doesn't, but, you know, I, I... What do people want from us? We're just trying to help. We're just trying to make this community a place where people wanna come, the outside, outside folks bringing the money in, leaving here. It's not gonna, you know, it's gonna stay here. So, what do you want from us? I just, I don't know. Just been listening to it for years and years, and now this letter. And I mean, why would a council go against all of these signatures of businesses?
True.
So, if you and someone else would like to speak, please come up and...
I just hate to hear the comment that nobody likes it. There's a group that don't like it, but there's more people that do like it than that don't.
They aren't here tonight.
But they put in a lot of effort all year long.
When we had the special meeting, they were there, and we had a lot of support.
The council said they would give us three more years to continue to grow this and try to make these changes.
Well, I'm gonna be gone soon, so the rest of the council may do that.
Made tremendous changes and made big improvements on this.
Oh, tremendous.
So, to sit here and feel like it's gonna be taken away now.
But that's not what the people are saying, it's gonna get taken away. They wanna spread it out. And, and people do have a right to run their businesses up and down the street.
They do. They do.
I totally agree. I've been a business owner for over thirty years.
Yeah, they do have a right.
You know, people... It's been referred to, because we work with the committee and stuff, we're making a bunch of money off this. I spend at least thirty thousand dollars on this rally every year. I don't make a dime. Okay? But I make it over the year because the people come back. You got all these galleries to sign this petition. Well, it's kinda hard to carry a big painting on your motorcycle to buy it to go home. But every one of these motorcycle riders own a car or a truck, and they come over later and buy stuff like that. I've got a lot of artwork in my house. I never once bought it on a motorcycle. But I see something when I'm out, and I go back there when I can with my vehicle, and I buy it. I mean, that's, what we're trying to get at is, these people come back and spend money at other restaurants, hotels. I mean, hotels are booked for months ahead of time for this weekend. But none of that counts for anything.
But not the ones in Old Town.
They were all full.
But that's not what Eric said. He did not get business from this event.
He's booked any week. For the week. Get in with track. And that's what he's told us before at our meeting. He does the same amount of business in his restaurant, whether that rally's there or it's not. He don't hire extra staff at a rally, because he said he can only handle so many with the staff he's got, and that's what he wants to do. And that's right, but he has to admit that it does draw new people to see the place. I do, you know, I mean, they park up and down the street, they see it.
Can I ask a question?
They cannot see it.
You, you said that the council said that we would give three years for this event. When?
That's what it was kinda indicated last year.
Last year? I wasn't, I wasn't here, this is why I'm asking.
Cause they were talking about canceling and not doing any more last year.
Oh, so last year, so three years after that, or that considered, that was also?
Well, I was counting that as one of the years.
That was one, and then this year, and so we'll do it another year to see how it happens.
Last year was when we voted.
Okay.
So, this year would be one.
Okay, I just wanted to work, cause I wasn't here last year. I wanted to know.
Yeah, I mean, I'm trying to do this for memory too, you know? But I know that there's a lot of people that come to the area. They're going, "Wow, I've never been up here before. I heard about the rally. I came up, man, it's beautiful up here." And to say the wine thing is not part of it. We do the poker run. We advertise the concert. Wide through beautiful wine country is where the ride goes. We've had stops at the wineries for the poker run. We go through that whole Pay Springs Road every time during a trip. Sometimes we don't go to Jerome. Sometimes we don't go to Camp Burning. But we always go through Pay Springs, all the wineries. We've done that every year when we put it on. You know, I've laid out the route every year. I know exactly where it goes. You know, we've put in a lot of time to do it. We try to get the wineries involved. We try to take it through Camp Burning. We try to take it through Sedona. We try to, when we lay out things for the route, we say, "Okay, here's a great pitcher spot. Stop at the chap on the rock. Stop over here. Stop over..." I mean, we try to point out other things in the area where they're riding. They don't have to stop there, but we pointed out they can. It's on the route. There's other things up here to see, you know, so... I mean, we talked one time, Eric said, "Move it out in front of my place on Highway two sixty. I would love it." I don't think we'll ever be able to shut down two sixty, but I would love to. But trying to move it to, um, the fairgrounds, the, um, Riverfront. The thing you got with motorcycles, they gotta be out, be on solid ground. Take stands, won't hold the bikes up. They'll fall over. You'll have a bunch of damaged bikes. People will be upset, but they will not come back.
And so, having something at the fairgrounds, if you have any history here, that didn't work either, because we had to move the motorcycle, motocross out to the area out of town. I mean, you just can't please everyone.
I mean, the nice thing, I don't know how many are familiar with Sturgis, but it's a rally that's been going on forever. But the whole thing with it, it's parking up and down the street, and that's Sturgis tile parking. That's what we talked about. That's what everybody loves about it. But he's right. You leave, you lose your spot. That's why we charge ten dollars a head this year to park, park your bike.
I think, what a difficult problem to have. You know, you've, okay, you got people coming in.
We try not to take up all the space. I mean, we try to accommodate, but, yeah, we don't accommodate everybody. We try. We've asked them to come to meetings. We meet at least once a month, sometimes twice a month. Then we go week to week, and we ask these different businesses, "Come to the meeting." They don't show up. So, how are we supposed to help fine-tune things if we get no input?
Yeah.
But there's always input right after it's over.
You know, like the Vice Mayor says that...
Work it up to it.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate that.
We would love to hear the input to work up to it instead of...
Well, obviously, every, every, everybody that cares about this event is not here tonight, so... But the very important ones who have the businesses are.
But there was import...
Wait, 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 wait.
There was input put in tonight. It's not like they, they didn't put in their input. Okay? I'm just saying, I'm just saying. That's fine, I understand that. But they say there's no input. There is input tonight.
Yeah. So, the Vice Mayor, I mean, I think that your idea of focusing on the whole city is something that maybe a future council might look at.
It's a long time coming, I think.
Yeah, and just, I mean, if activities aren't welcome, then there are other areas that may welcome them. So, what does council wanna do about, um, what would you like to do about this agenda?
I think, and I know you're frustrated, I think
I am.
we can't, we can't base everything on the individuals that spoke today, because we know there are other individuals. And Hezekiah will get that information for us. I think we need to keep our minds open for, for next year. He's been fine-tuning it. Apparently, we spoke about trying to keep it in Old Town for three years, and after that, three years, move it. That's flexible. Obviously, we didn't write a contract. But I think we need to understand that there's more than the people that are here tonight. We can't base our decision on the twenty people that are sitting here. We have to let Hezekiah do his work, get the information, and then go forward from there.
And let's get this on a work session as soon as possible.
Bingo.
Madam Mayor, Council, also part of that, uh, staff was directed last year for the 2015 decision to do surveys through Survey Monkey. Uh, we did it through the Cottonwood Chamber and through the Old Town Association, and it asked a lot of those same questions. And, and what we found is that overwhelmingly, citywide, businesses want this program. So, we can share that data again.
Please.
So, I'll get new data, if you would like.
Well, like I said, these people were speaking against shutting it all down and running everybody out of town. They just wanna tweak, as we were talking before about tweaking this event.
Right.
Well, maybe this is one more tweak we gotta do. It's not congest Old Town, you know, with, if, frankly, myself, I've always been concerned about the amount of people down here and, and being a safety issue. I mean, that's one thing that I've thought about, you know, that, but that's just me. I don't, you know, I don't ride. I don't do these things. So, that is an issue. But that's all we're asked, they're asking to do, is look at this and see what can be done. And if we can spread it out, great. You want the whole town to benefit? Great. But these people have a right to run their business too.
And so, what part of your, your presentation was moving pieces of it? I mean, that's what you just said, around town.
Right.
But the businesses want you to move more. And so, I guess, so is council recommending, um, Councilmember Haudig recommended a work session?
Work session.
It may take more than one or two.
Good move.
But I think that the people that are opposed to it need to be there too. If they wanna tweak, they need to speak up and they need to get in there and help us tweak it. I'm not a rider. I don't come down for it. I live in Old, in Smelter City. I hear the bikes. I love it. I see the bikes all over town. I have no problem with it. But I don't live down here. I don't have a shop down here. But, um, I, I think from people coming through the Chamber of Commerce, they're excited about it. They're, they're staying in places. We're giving out all the information for all the businesses down here. We got a whole wall on Old Town Cottonwood, the people that choose to advertise at, at the Chamber. So, it's, it's not that they don't benefit from it. And the reason I was saying what I was saying is that we still catch a lot of grief on this council for not thinking of the whole city, that everything's geared, which is what's bringing people into the whole city. So, you know, there, there's a whole lot of pictures here. There's a whole lot of frames here, but we need all the players. We can't tweak something. I don't know what to tweak. I have no clue. But we need the other players here, not just the people that are in favor of it. We need these people that signed this cotton picking letter here to get involved and help tweak it, if that's what they want. Otherwise, then they just need to put up with the event down there that's been improving every year. If they don't wanna be involved, then that's, that's up to them. That's their deal.
So, um, our, our poor staff, we say, "Oh, yes, go ahead," and then we say, "Oh, stop now." Um, but it sounds like the council would like to hold a work session. I would, like we did before, I would suggest it be at the rec center, because possibly this wouldn't be a large enough venue. And here we go again.
Um, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, I know we're gonna have a pretty congested work session for the eighth. Um, do you wanna try and fit it on there for the eighth, or?
What, or do we need to just have a special meeting?
Uh, we could do that as well. That would be fun.
Okay.
We could do that.
And then if we could...
Instead of getting a big crowd down here, we've got the members of the TVR, the group, we've got the council. Let's sit down and talk amongst ourselves and staff, first of all. Last time we had this meeting, there's tons of people... Last time we had this meeting, there's tons of people from out of town that came in here. And I wish I'd, I wish I'd called for hands to see who was local and who wasn't. And I guarantee you that, that bulk of those people were from out of town.
Well, and I remember you saying also, a look at moving it. You, I mean, you were not necessarily in the majority at the time, but, but that was something that you said.
That's the story of my life. I was a minority.
So, I guess the question would be, so you'd like the staff, the TVR committee, to come up with alternate locations, and then try to figure out if that's going to be successful, those alternate locations, because that's going to be really challenging.
No, I don't think necessarily alternate locations at this point. Figuring on how to tweak it and, and fine tune it.
To keep it in Old Town, but fine tune it?
There was, there was some questions about some businesses that were being shut off, like the Hippie Emporium, and also contact those businesses. And particularly, these guys on the list, but everybody, and, and get that information, then come back to us to, to discuss that. We can't really say, "Let's start hitting different spots yet till we know what the consensus is, the information from the other individuals."
So, um, council member Hodegi, if we get the council, um, it's going to be a public meeting, if you want to meet with their committee? I mean, or do you want to just, we have, our council member is not with us anymore that's on that committee, so maybe we need... If you want to have an open meeting, that's fine. If you want to just meet with them, maybe appoint...
Is in the work session, uh, the public allowed to come to the work session?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
There you go.
So you want to go ahead and hold, hold the smaller meeting with the whole council?
Before we get a big crowd of people, let's, let's get the people that are on the TVR, in the council and staff, and, and we can start there. We can start there. Instead, I get a big, a whole lot of people.
A special meeting first?
And...
A special meeting.
All the confusion that goes with that.
And then later, maybe a hearing or whatever?
Well, I'm, I'm sure that can evolve into...
So you, the special meeting can determine then the next step?
So we'll, we'll set the meeting based on the, getting some more feedback from the merchants, um, in Old Town. And just seeing what their concerns are. And then at that point, would the council determine whether we move it or keep it here? And what I'm hearing is keep it here in the council chambers as opposed to the rec center?
This should be small.
Wherever people are going to be.
For the special meeting.
I mean, because we can't control who's going to show up and...
I think it, they should all be at the rec center. You just, with something that everyone is so passionate about, and you're having all of the councils there, you're likely to have a, you could have a big crowd, so you should be able to accommodate it.
And it'll actually be, well, we can, we can get it scheduled for November.
I'm going to be gone from the fourth to the thirteenth.
Okay.
I'll be here.
Does that work?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you all for your input. You're very much appreciated. Okay, so the next, there's three more items. How many people are here? Okay, hang on. Just a, how many people are here for item number three? Authorizing the submission of an application for an economic development grant. How many people are here for that? How many people are here to talk about a new city website? And how many people are here to talk about a public hearing regarding annexation? Okay, so let's go ahead with that item next. So the next item is public hearing regarding possible annexation of portions of thirteen residential properties that are currently partially within Yavapai County. Whoops, I lost my packet here. So... Whoops, and you know what? That item wasn't in my packet, and I thought I downloaded the last packet, but...
I, I had to resend you the packet.
I, I downloaded the resend, but apparently, maybe I downloaded the other one, and that's the one I picked on.
Is this number one, then?
It's number one, yeah. So I'll just grab that off of the city's website. So...
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council.
Scott Ellis?
This is the public hearing. I'll give you a quick recap of what's going on. The Yavapai County assessor approached the city regarding thirteen properties along the southwest border, where the city and county boundary runs through them. Every property here, it's got a hash line through it. It's partially within the city and partially within the county. It's been like that for forty-something years. It was a mistake when that Verdy Village Unit Eight was planted. Uh, both city council and board of supervisors approved it while the property straddled the boundary. Recently, the assessor was made aware of it, and basically, there's two options. We can annex the portion of the property that's within the county and make these properties all considered within the city limits. Or the assessor will split the parcels, and part of the parcel will be in the city limits, part will be in the county, and the property owners will have to pay two tax bills. We got directions from the coun, council on September twentieth to move forward with the annexation, and it began a thirty day waiting period. And within that thirty days, in the last ten days, we had to come back to council for a public hearing. We are now approaching the end of that ten days. After the thirty day waiting period ends, we can send petitions to property owners to sign. We have one year to do that. If we get minimum fifty-one percent of the property owners and fifty-one percent of the valuation of the property, then councils can move to approve the annexation if they wish. Public hearing notices were sent to the thirteen property owners on October seventh. We filed the petition with the county recorder, I believe, September twentieth, which was the day after council directed us to move forward. And there's some questions regarding sewer service, um, emergency response, things like that. I've been made aware that, there is one property here, and this property owner is concerned. They're going to be the only one on this street off of Spur of Nacatillo, that their house is the only one that's within the city limits. So I've been informed that even though everybody surrounding them is in the county, it is a city property. It, it would be a city property if it was annexed, and our departments would respond to it. As far as the sewer goes, there's no requirement to connect to it right now. If it's logistically possible, when someone were to sell their house, they would have to then connect to the sewer. Um, at this time, eight of the lots are already connected. Four are not in a location that would be logical to connect, so there's really only one that if that property was sold after annexation, they would have to foot the bill to connect to the sewer.
Is there any way, legal way that they could be grandfathered? No?
I don't think so, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
I, I think Scott said that there really are only two options. Um, one is to annex, or there is no, there is no ability to de-annex property that's within...
I was, I'm sorry. I was talking about wastewater. Uh, there would be, there would be four properties that weren't connected, that if they sold their home, they would have to connect, which would be an expense for them. Could we legally grandfather them that they would never have to connect?
The way it was explained to me, sorry.
And I'm sorry, because I missed the meeting on this. I wasn't here, so I'm...
The way it was explained to me by the utilities manager is the four that are not, there's, there's five that are not connected. Four of those wouldn't necessarily have to connect if they sold, because it's just, it is not logistically...
Okay.
Feasible, because it would be overly, overly expensive. We couldn't put that burden on them.
Okay.
So really, there's only one that it would be possible for them to connect. You know, who knows how long until anybody else were to ever annex. If they did, or a city sewer came out here, then that might change that to where they would connect later on. All thirteen lots, my understanding, they've been receiving resident water rates as of now already. There was questions regarding cable service. It's been answered that they can keep cable company that they have. So there's really very minimal impact. I know the fire district tax that some of them pay right now would go away with the county.
And Scott, I'll, I'll jump back in on the, on the wastewater. Our ordinance currently says that, that when, when connection is available, any person within this, any property within the city that, that can connect shall connect. I think, you know, Roger can, can speak more to that. It, it might be more of a, of an enforcement matter within the discretion of staff, but that's, that's how the ordinance currently reads.
I know how the ordinance reads, but in this case, because this is unique, there's one house that, I mean, could council not just grandfather it?
Well, and, and that's probably not a, I mean...
I mean, grandfather it unless, I mean, Verdy Village at some point will have to probably create a special taxing district and have, get wastewater treatment. But, so I guess grandfathering it could create...
I think if, if, what the councils would desire is the, as a practical effect, is grandfathering. I, I think by legislation, um, council could, could accomplish that. Um, you know, we, there, there could be some kind of hardship, and I don't think there is right now in the ordinance, but some kind of, uh, being very mindful of the law of unintended consequences if we were to, to amend the wastewater ordinance.
Well, no, we wouldn't amend it for one house. We would just, we would just set it aside by legislative rule, and that would be the only house, I guess, in the whole city that would have a different...
Uh, Madam, I'd want to look into that, because that's starting to sound like special legislation, and we have to be more...
Right, and I just want to know if that's an issue with that household, whether we could make it easier for them. It's just my question. Hear it?
So you know, I am that house.
You are that house, okay. And we'll give you a chance to speak. All right.
Um, that's all I have on that, so if you want to speak to any of the residents, have questions for them, if they have concerns, so address them.
Okay.
Okay.
And so, um, this is a public hearing. Council, did you have any questions?
No, right now.
From Mr. Ellis on that? Okay, we're going to open up the floor to a public hearing regarding possible annexation of portions of thirteen residential properties that are currently partially within Yavapai County and partially within the city of Cottonwood. And so, um, if you would please fill out a form, there's forms in the back, so that we can get your name for the record. If you would hand, maybe hand those out, um... Okay, and we would welcome the comments from the public. And this is, we're just asking for the information so that when we record this meeting and write the minutes, we have the correct information from you on how to identify the speaker.
You can fill that out after you've spoken, too. Just make sure we get it.
Yeah.
All right, I can do it. Do you want to read for me, or somebody else speaking on this? All right, well, I am that one house.
And if you could please identify yourself?
I'm in Wayne Peck. I live at Forty East Spur. That'll work. So I am that one house.
Okay.
Um, as you can see, the sewer, my understanding is the sewer comes up through Ferb, and it comes over to here. I'm not sure it bypasses here at all. Only way I'm going to get sewer is if I have to hook up over here to this one. I don't see where that's practical. I don't know that there's an easement through this property. Unfortunately, this owner couldn't make it. His mother fell down and broke her hip yesterday.
Aw.
So he went to Iowa. Otherwise, he was going to be here. Uh, I had the concern with the sewer and the, and the, uh, the fact that I'm on Septi. I did look at this. Excuse me. And according to municipal code, that I looked up, and maybe I missed something, which is very likely, fourteen point oh two point oh, fourteen point oh four point oh two E, it looks like, uh, all subdivision developments, including single family, mobile family dwellings approved after July one nineteen ninety, whose property is contiguous to an existing sewer mainline, shall provide extension to connection to the Cottonwood Sanitary Sewer System at their expense. My house is built in eighty-seven. So that alone, to me, what I read here indicates that my house was built before what the ordinance says, so I should be exempt, but I'm not sure. I have talked to planning and zoning. Nobody can give me a clear, one-hundred percent in writing answer to that. And obviously, I can't get that here tonight either. It seems to be the same thing. It concerns me. I'm neutral on the decision whether to be annexed or not, but I have a grand total of seven percent of my property in the city, and none of my structures. And my sewer, uh, my, uh, Septi doesn't even get crossed by the, by the line, so I'm concerned. Second concern I have is right here. Who's going to take care of the street? I can't get that answer either, in concrete. I've been trying for over a week now to find out who's going to, who will be responsible for the street. If the county comes up and does rehab to the street through here, are they going to do a little line across here and just not do in front of my house? Or are they going to hit me with a bill? It's not that far fetched. I know for sure that the, the county comes up here, and they stop right in front of their driveway, and they do their chip and seal, and they stop.
They do, yeah.
So if they're going to do it to them on their driveway, what are they going to do to me in front of my house? Again, I'm neutral. I can't get answers to questions. I would love to have an opinion, but right now, I'm not very encouraged. So that's why I came here. I would have been here on the twentieth. I have grandchildren. They had, uh, an event we went to. It's out of town. And grandchildren, I'm sorry, are more important.
Yes, they are.
So, but I don't know if these people have the same concerns I have, because now they're going to have the same issue. Is the county going to come up, do part of their road, and then ignore that little bit, because that's in the city? So those are questions I would like answered. I don't know, I don't know, I've never met these people. They may be here tonight, and they may have similar concerns. Same thing with the sewer. Unless the sewer's coming up crews, how are they going to connect? Or are they going to be forced to?
Those are all great questions. I'd want to know the answers to.
And the other, and actually, I, I've talked to some people at times. They, they did what they could. Uh, my understanding is taxes difference is supposed to be less because of the fire department, uh, fees are less in the city than they are in the county.
We don't have any taxes for fire.
Okay, so there's no special taxes there. The water, I've already determined, we're, we're being charged a city rate because we're on the city line to begin with. We're going on the same line as everybody here. It would be pretty inequitable if we were having to pay a higher fee for water than other people already on the same line. Emergency services, I do have a concern. If we're the only ones over here in the city, and heaven forbid, we had to call for emergency services, and I've been... It's been suggested I'm a bit of a pessimist. I worked twenty-six years in a county entity, and I understand bureaucracy a little bit. And if this was to go through, you make the decision, all the people get notified that need to be notified, and then they notify all the people that need to be notified, and then they notify all the people that need to be notified, and somebody has to put it into the nine-one-one system that when we call, we're a city. If the wrong person comes, if the county comes and there's not an interoperability agreement, do we get charged the bill now from the county? Because we're city taxpayers, we're not county taxpayers. And now do I have to get charged for that? So another question I have, that I don't get a clear answer.
Are you talking about police or fire?
Police or fire.
Both.
Fire's behind you there.
Is there an interoperability agreement that solves that problem? I would love that answer.
Yes. Mike?
Is there a fire address? I'd like to address that answer, please.
I'm not sure.
I meant you, I meant the chief of Verdy Valley Fire Department.
Thank you.
The...
In a hearing, can we have?
You can come up if you like.
Give and take, or just...
The bottom line is, you will get fire and police, uh, well, at least address that, but you'll get fire, absolutely. You will get that whether, even if there is a mistake, and, and they didn't say it was in the city and they sent Verdy Valley, and they respond, we have automatically an agreement with them. You will not get billed. You'll get the same levels of service, whichever fire truck gets there. And it's the same for the people. We have this issue already going with, as you can well imagine, we're at Spur and these things.
Right.
We work seamlessly with these guys, so you'll get the same response either way, and you won't get billed by them.
That's the first thing I got to answer.
I appreciate that.
And I, from your standpoint.
Stay back there.
Yes, sir. Johnny Williams, Patrol Command, Capa of Spur. And, uh, yes, we work hand in hand with the sheriff's office, and there might be some questions as to whether or not you're in the city or which jurisdiction is appropriate for criminal charges. charges, so who would take the report? An emergency response, we would both probably respond.
Perfect.
Either entity, and there is no charge.
That'll work, that, that's one of the answers I've been looking for. Cable was actually one of my questions, I didn't know suddenly get a, uh, a, uh, agreement with the city to have a franchise or not, that, that's been answered. Uh, so taxes, water, sewer, emergency services, cable, and roadwork. I would love an answer on the roadwork.
So on the roadwork, um, there are times that we have collaborated with the county on projects, I mean, First Street is a collaborative project, although after the first paving, the city pays for all of it now, even the county side. Is that correct?
Yeah, I, again, reflecting back on who asked for this annexation to begin with, was the county.
The county asked.
And so, I feel fairly confident that if I call up and say, hey, let's put something in writing that says you guys are going to still maintain these streets, even though we have a couple of people that are technically in the city, I think we can get that agreement.
Like a, a MOU, or memorandum of understanding?
Yeah, or even a letter.
But I mean, even paving, we've, we've collaborated financially on paving streets.
Yeah, we're, we're talking about such a minimal amount here that it would be...
It would almost be easier to do it than not.
Exactly.
But that doesn't mean they wouldn't do it.
Yeah.
Uh, I got, only last comment I would like to make is, everybody keeps talking about there's no other option. I keep hearing there's no other way to do this, except either annex it or don't. Um, personally, I don't have a problem with two property bills, and my understanding is they'll come out to the same amount anyway, or within pennies. But, um, what prevents going to the state legislature and say, hey, we just want to have you change our property boundary because it's been going on for forty-five years, and the city has assumed these properties for that forty-five years, and the county has assumed those properties for forty-five years? How difficult could it possibly be to go to the state legislature after the election, heaven forbid? Because right now, I wouldn't suggest ever trying that. And saying, we just simply have these people, and we have a city property line that's a little screwed up, and we know once it's been incorporated, it can't be given back to the county apparently, according to state statute, but can the state make an exception and grandfather this because it's been done for forty-five years? And that would get rid of all this ambiguity. But that's just a thought on my part. And thank you for the time.
Well, thank you for coming to speak, we appreciate that.
And, uh, paper's right here.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, just a quick response to that, I think that it, it still doesn't get rid of the issue of the two different tax bills. Because the tax bill, if you're in the city, is different than your, if you're outside the city, and so consequently...
But why can't I pay county taxes?
Right.
If they, if they just, if they just grandfathered what's been going on for forty-five years? Because my understanding, the ones, my understanding of this part, I've talked to county and city on this, my understanding, these are being assumed to be city properties, and they're paid on the city tax.
Right.
And these are all assumed to be county properties, and they're paying county tax.
But we have no property tax.
We don't have property tax.
I know, but they're, but they're built as city, they're being built as city.
The people inside the city pay the same exact property tax to Yavapai County as people outside the city do.
With the exception of the fire district.
Well, the fire district isn't the county, it's its own governing entity.
Right. Come on this way.
Yeah, we, we do not pay a fire district tax, but we pay the same, because the fire district is its own taxing district, it's separate from the county.
Right. I understand the fire district would actually go down.
We, we pay the same taxes as...
But it wouldn't be in my advantage if I have to pay a sewer bill.
Right.
That's the other question, if I don't connect, do I have to pay a sewer bill?
And I, I was just looking at the, at the code section you were citing, there, there may be, uh, there may be an interpretation of that, that, you know, doesn't require a, a, an act of Congress.
So maybe what I read might be what I read?
Might actually be. I hate to give legal advice on the fly.
Okay, I just, that's what I read, and I'm not a lawyer.
No, a, and actually, I, I think at one point, the city required connection, that, that's been superseded by what you've read, and it's simply you're subject to fees, you're not to a mandate to connect.
So the council could, could un-subject this particular entity to fees?
We can, we can look into that.
I would recommend that.
I don't think that should be a...
Have you re-erected to pay fees for something that I wasn't getting?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Kay, next person who would like to speak? Do we get most of your questions answered on that?
We live right next to each other, so yeah.
Okay, because we, it's a hearing, we're happy to have everyone speak who would like to. Okay, if we've had the questions answered, then we will close the floor to the public. Um, is there anybody else that would like to comment, or? Okay, so we'll move on to the next item. Item number two, presentation, okay, so, let's do Casey's, because Casey's got to drive a long way home. Okay.
Sorry.
So, item number three is authorizing...
Wait, are you...
Thank you all, authorizing the submission of an application. Turn on the lights, please.
He's got a presentation, too.
Thank you.
Casey's got a presentation, too, so...
That's what we're doing, Casey's.
I know, but he's got a presentation, too.
Oh, okay.
That's okay, he can turn them off and turn them back on for us.
Rudy can turn them off again.
Speaker.
Okay, so Casey is authorizing the submission of an application for an economic development administration grant in the amount of two million four hundred and thirty thousand to help fund an Old Town Streetscape extension project, phase four, Willard Street to Tenth Street, and there's no one here from Old Town on something that's going to bring a couple million dollars.
And, Madam Mayor, if I can give you a little bit of history on this, this was actually a topic that came up in, uh, the Cottonwood Economic Development Council, and, um, Tom Pender said, hey, you know, what's the possibility of extending the Streetscape in Old Town? And, uh, the council talked about, you know, extending it north to the edge of the city and looking at extending it as far south as the bypass to try and include as much of that area in kind of, you know, the commercial district of, of Cottonwood, but still designating Old Town as Old Town. But Old Town does extend further south, and, uh, it's an opportunity, we're already beginning to see it, an expansion of businesses, not only going east and west, but certainly going, uh, south in particular. And so this would be a good way to include this. So, um, Casey and I got to talking about it, and, uh, uh, he was aware of a potential opportunity that may or may not be a long shot, but, uh, um, I'll let Casey take it from there. But obviously, the idea here is the economic growth we've seen in Old Town, particularly since the Streetscape was put in and a lot of other effort was made to improve Old Town, the thought is, is if we can expand it, it would again help to generate some economic developments, and jobs, um, some new revenues. So with that, Mr. Rudy?
Okay, thank you, I've got eighty-seven slides, I'll try to make this real fast as I get up here, and, uh, I'll, actually, I'm going to make this pretty quick. Um, so, I am a member of the NACOG, um, Economic Development District Committee, and, um, NACOG is, works very closely with the EDA, the Economic Development Administration, and so, um, since I've been involved for ten years, I know where, finally have figured out where the money is, and that's what I'm chasing here. My understanding is that, whoops, what did I just do? Looking for the, the light, oh, there we go. Okay, um, this is bypass, you all probably know that better than I do, right here, and, um, of course, here's a sign that says Sedona, so Sedona's out this way. And when this bypass went in, it bypassed this whole section right here. I guess it was really a great idea to make traffic flow through town faster and better and easier, but it really did have an impact on Old Town. The, this is something that I brought up when I stood up here earlier, when we were having this long debate about Thunder Valley Rally. Uh, there's a hundred and five businesses that I've been able to identify between Hogwild and basically, um, the Hippie Emporium. Started looking at the back streets and all the stuff that's going on, there's pretty, you know, that's an estimate, but it's pretty darn close. And then, um, okay, I'll get this straight eventually. And then, okay, and then there's close to five hundred employees, and at one time, there weren't nearly that many employees. So what we're trying to do, and I just wanted to point a couple of things out here to, um, this is the northern end of Old Town, there's the Hippie Emporium, this area's not very appealing. This is the other end, looking towards Riot and Charzak's business right here. This is where the Streetscape basically ends, right on this side of the bridge. What we're talking about doing now is extending, so you can kind of see the, here's where the north end of Old Town ends, and here's where the other end ends, let me see, I'm looking for Willard. Well, anyway, um, that's the end of Old Town, as I see it. So, you can see the vi- vitality just in the cars driving around nowadays in Old Town. That's kind of the center that, um, Trevor was talking about in terms of the businesses not being happy with, um, Thunder Valley Rally. You can see, um, I just put this slide up because this is a brand-new business, it's moving back off of Old Town, uh, off the main street. Here's an interesting slide in my, from an economic development perspective, there are three new businesses right here. Now, none of them are open, but when they're open, there's probably going to be about five people here, five people here, um, Maynard Keenan's, uh, Masonic Hall will be, winery, tasting room, there's probably going to be ten employees up there. So, there's all this vitality, uh, this is, uh, Maynard's Wine Bar and Wine and Pasta Bar, I bet there's ten people working there. Well, I don't know, don't, I don't know what's going to happen here yet, but hopefully there will be ten people working there. The point of this slide is it's a private-public partnership, and I think that's what we, as people entrusted with the citizens' tax dollars, uh, should be concerned about and, and promoting. Um, so we're trying to create an environment to cultivate an economic engine by expanding the business district, that's the bottom line, the reason I'm standing here in front of you right now, is that we're talking about, um, several phases. The original Old Town, before I ever got here, was phase one, two, and three. So what you see right down in Old Town right now is one, two, and three. Now we're looking at phase four. Phase four is from Willard to Tenth Street. And then, phase five would be Tenth Street to Mingus Avenue, and phase six would be Mingus Avenue to Main Street, or to Mingus Avenue to eighty-nine A, sorry, that's a mistake. So, there's really six phases to this project. And when you look at the north end of, of Old Town, we didn't identify that as phase seven, but going towards Clarkdale, that area needs to be cleaned up, so, I understand private-public partnership is going to work, mostly private money is going to fix up that end of the street. Uh, I'm going to go through this pretty quick, because I know it's getting late, and I don't want to be here all night either, but I want to get to the point. Um, there's been all kinds of things, so when I said phase one, two, and three, here's phase one, here's phase two, here's phase three, this is what I'm talking about today to get the one point, or two-point-three million dollars. Is this to work, do the Streetscape right through here, curbs, gutters, lights, the whole bit. We're trying to expand, we're trying to take those four hundred employees and grow them to six hundred employees, and I think there's a lot of opportunity right in through here. So that is phase four, then phase five, and then phase six. And you can see, I'm not going to read this to you, you can, you've got all the information I sent to you, but there are tons of projects and lots of money that we've put into this. So, the Willard project, Willard to Tenth, is two-point-seven, two, two-point-seven million. I'm asking for the EDA to give us two-point-three million, and then we come up with the additional three hundred thousand to do this Streetscape. So we're getting, for our three hundred thousand, we're getting two-point-three million, if, if we all decide that that's where we want to go. There's a whole bunch of projects that we've invested a lot of money in, and, um, I think we're all very proud of that, and there's a whole bunch of projects that are just starting. I mean, Three Kings sundials turned into a nice hotel, um, the Sonic Lodge is going to be another big project, so you can get, you get the idea of how much money we've spent as a city, and how much private business is spent in Old Town. Now we want to expand, expand it, or at least, that's what I'm proposing. Uh, zoning map, uh, project description, you've got all this in your packet. Uh, so, phase one was done in nineteen ninety-seven, phase two in two thousand and three, three in two thousand and three, that's the existing Old Town area, and you were all here before me, so you probably know this better than I do, the proposed, ah, darn it, sorry. The proposed is phase four, from Willard to Tenth. That total cost is two million seven hundred thousand. And then, eventually, if we have the willpower to do this, we can go on to, from Tenth to Mingus, and then Mingus to eighty-nine A. So when people come in right now into, towards Old Town, they drive up to eighty-nine A, and there's really, it's a little confusing about where do you go to get to Old Town, it's not very appealing, and we're trying to make it, when they drive up to that intersection, they look straight ahead and they go, that's where I want to go. Um, so, you know, this project is, phase four is, is a couple of years, it's probably going to take us a couple of years to get the grant, to get the design, to build it, and then phase five might be a couple of years after that, and then phase six could be a couple of years after that. So, this is a really long-term project, but it's just keeping the ball rolling and improving, continuing to improve and expand Old Town. Um, so, this is sort of before the original Streetscape, this is after the original Streetscape, this is what it looks like today. And then, we're looking at, um, Morgan explained, uh, Morgan explained this to me, it's a term called road diet. And these next few, um, uh, designs are just going to show you the possibilities of some of the things we could possibly do with the road and softening and, and the road diet. Um, and here's a couple of other general concepts you can look at, just things that we could think about doing for this project. And then, here's some solutions, these are the kind of things that are going to happen, and this is some of the value that we're going to get as a city, that our taxpayers should be concerned about. We're going to improve our infrastructure, we're going to increase safety, we're going to increase tourism, economic development, increase property values, encourage investment in our business district, I think it's going to expand by doing this project, create jobs, generate wealth, and improve our quality of life. That's, that bottom one is the definition of economic development, right there. And that's what I'm trying to do. And then, I just wanted to show you this, lighten it up a little bit, this is what we're going to really do down in Old Town, this is obviously San Francisco. This is obviously San Francisco. Wouldn't that be fun? But, you know, you look at places like San Francisco, somebody had a ton of vision to do this. Maybe they were crazy, maybe they were insane, but they did it. So I'm thinking, what we're talking about is like tiny little piece of a pie. This is huge. We're not gonna do that. And, but, you know, you look at something like this, this is a cool streetscape. These are the kind of things I'd like to think could be our legacy as people that work for the city and city council and city mayor, city manager and mayor, that we can think about doing really neat things in our town and getting a grant to do it. I'm not asking for a ton of money from you to do this, I'm trying, I'm gonna go out and get the money. And then, uh, so this is the bottom line right here. The, the total project cost is two million seven-hundred-and-thirty thousand, and this is, Morgan gave me these numbers. I talked to him, he gave me a square foot cost. I figure he's been building roads for a while, he knows pretty much how much it costs. I am going to ask for two million three-hundred thousand from EDA. So what I'm really asking the city for is three, a commitment to say, "Casey, go, go ahead and apply for the grant, but I just want you to realize that we're gonna have to come up with some money. There's gonna be a little bit of a match." This is, I know we're tight on money, I totally understand that. This is a small number compared to two million four-hundred, two million four-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. Just want you to know that, and I think you know that. So that's what I'm asking for. I'm asking for you to say, "Go ahead and apply for the grant. If you don't want to, want me to do it, say so, and it's done deal." But I'm just saying, this is a future project where I think there's a good chance we can get the money, but it's a whole bunch of effort, and we have to throw a little piece into the pie. That's it. Any questions?
So where will we get the money for the match, if maybe Rudy could comment, or the city manager, whoever wishes, city manager would be great.
Madam Mayor, uh, council members, and, and really, to be honest, um, and, and give the council all the facts at this point, we're not sure that it's a ten, ten percent match. It could be more than that. And so, uh, it could be less than that. But this, what, what we're asking for tonight is just the authorization from the council to go ahead and apply, uh, for this grant. And obviously, if, if we get approved for it, and for some reason it's fifty percent, then we would have to, you know, probably turn it down. But at this point, all we're asking the council for is just the authorization to go ahead and apply for the grant.
I'll see where it was. It's pretty simple. Parents isn't here. No-brainer. Okay, so I think-
We can turn it down if it's too much. Sounds like a go.
Yeah. You know, we, to accept the grant, we have to be able to approve the match, whatever it's gonna be. I mean, you know, hopefully it's no more than three-hundred thousand, and hopefully it's less than three-hundred thousand, but, um, we won't know until we apply and figure out what, what is available in terms of the grant funding. And we may, may, may or may not get it.
And another thing, um, you know, if we, part of the reason I need your approval to move forward is that, um, are you Donald Trump, or what? We have to take this to the NACOG Regional Council. That's the next step. If they say, I wanna go to them, say, "The city council approved it," and, um, and then ask them the same request I'm asking you. "I'd like to move forward, do you approve of this?" If they say yes, then we go to work and write the grant. But I'd hate to get the grant, and then, um, it's a reasonable amount of match that we put in, and then we all goes, you know, all this effort, and then we go, "No, we can't do this." I mean, I, I get it, I get it, you know, it's a catch-twenty-two thing, but I'd like some assurance, a little bit of assurance anyway, that it's a good thing to do, and maybe we can figure it out, Rudy.
Yeah. I think we've got some time for, to, to decide, I mean, all we're asking for is that we apply for the grant. You know, we still have to go through different, different committees and groups, and finally-
Jump through the hoops.
And obviously, the minute that they say, "Yes, you're approved," uh, we still have to come back and decide whether we have the resources, and by then, we're probably already in the budget season. We're, we're about a month and a half, two months away before we start earnings by the cycle, so-
The timing's pretty good then, too.
So the timing is good. And we go ahead and apply, we'll know well in, in advance, uh, the kind of matching funds, and then if it's, if it's, if it's, uh, three-hundred, two-hundred, four-hundred, half-a-million, council can make that decision, we can go ahead and try to, try to shoehorn it in the budget, uh, as we, we've had best, we've done at the project. So, you know, I think it's, it's, I'd hate to walk away from an, an opportunity, uh, at this point in time, not knowing exactly where we're gonna be, and still not in the next budget cycle is about when it's gonna come through.
And it could be shifted to two different years, or even more, to three different years.
And we've, and we've done that before with big grants, is, is, if, if it's large enough, and we have the, the timeframe available at times, we've, we've, you know, done part of it in one year, part of it in another, and split up the, the matching funds. So I think, I think it's something that we have, we should at least try to, to go for. And I think expanding the Old Town boundary would be, would be an excellent thing to do.
And I mean to, I mean, two million dollars, or over two million dollars, that would be, that part of it would be free and clear, that would be pretty hard to turn down.
That doesn't come up too often.
No. Good job, Casey. Somebody kinda giving you a gift of two million, if we would be lucky enough to win it. So, okay, um, so-
Can I make a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. I move to authorize a submission of a grant application to the United States Economic Development Administration as proposed by staff.
Second. So, um, Kyla Allen made the motion, Lynda Norman seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries, drive safely.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council, I appreciate it.
All right. Finally, John Carter. We've just sort of moved this agenda around, and thank you for your, for your newfound patience, right?
Welcome to the city.
Well, yeah. So now we have a presentation, uh, discussion, and council direction on a proposed new city website by John Carter, our new IT director. And we have been waiting for this presentation for quite a while, and I would say that we're probably pretty excited about it.
Oh, boy. (laughing).
Good night, Casey.
Good night. Good night.
Uh, Madam Mayor, esteemed council. Hope I know how this works. There we go. So, uh, we have the new website, and this is still a demo website, this is not live by any stretch. Um, we wanted to get approval for, that we're in, on the right track with the design, so that we can move forward with the project. So you can see, uh, I don't have exactly the old website up, but, uh, this would have a lot of pictures. Uh, it, it's also a very mobile-friendly site, which our old site is not, for those folks with PDAs and phones and such.
Is it a WordPress background?
Sorry?
Is it WordPress?
No. It's their own unique platform.
Okay, the Civic, whatever it is.
And it's called Civic Plus, uh, the actual company is-
Civic Plus, they have their own content management services.
Right. Uh, 'cause a, a couple of the, quickly, a couple of the features you get here is, first, we get a lot more civic engagement with the public. Uh, they have a place where they can, uh, sign up for things, so they can get notified when things get changed on the website. Uh, that's particularly, uh, helpful for things like the Parks and Recreation, where people are signing up for classes and this sort of things. And, uh, this has all of the, uh, this has all of the social media built in, Facebook features, Twitter, uh, as we, we have a Facebook site for the, uh, Facebook page for the city. This would all be integrated into the website, where, you know, it's all in one place for everyone. Uh, also, a couple of other features we have here is, all of the things are very easy to find on this new website, and the, the, um, even if we have folks who are multilingual, this is all built in with site tools. They can actually translate the page, they can, um, email to someone, they can, you know, do just anything they like with it. Uh, not changing the content, of course, but this is all just in, in the idea of civic engagement with the public. Now, another, uh, good feature of this is the content management system that Rudy mentioned. Uh, currently, we only have a few people in the city with our current website who can actually post content, because it does require-
Right, which creates problems.
Right. Uh, with the new content management system, and we will do some training with this, with all the folks in the different departments that need to do updates, um, it's very easy. It's, it's as simple as, you know, cutting and pasting and moving and just typing what you need.
Great. Kinda like Word or something like that?
Yes, it's, it's very simple. And, uh, the way we'll distribute that is have, there are three types of users for each of the departments. You have an author, that's someone who can create content, but cannot publish it to the live website. So that way, they can get all kinds of, uh, input from other users, but then, one or a few people from each department would be the publishers, and they would be the ones who would be authorized to actually publish to the website. Um, obviously, we have to be very careful with what the city says, or-
Right.
The website is the city's voice, along with Facebook and these other, um, things that touch the public. Um, and so, and then there's an owner. So the owner could actually add their own users to, and this would be just to each page, like, for instance, the fire department, police department, Parks and Recreation. Um, so what we're asking for tonight is just approval, um, of the design idea here. This is not necessarily the final design, there, we can always do this in stages. Um, just that we're kind of on the right track, I guess, so to speak, and we can move forward with doing the project. Um, the next step would be creating the project plan, doing the training for all the users, and then we, our idea is to have it up and running by the end of the year, and live.
Great.
Any questions?
Well, I went through it, and sometimes you have to go a few layers down to find what you need, but I think it's great. I have just some, two little tiny comments about things that aren't important, but that welcome to Cottonwood?
Yes.
That circle is really blah.
We jazz it.
(laughing) An artist, maybe, would be able to help you to make it, like, more sexy, or whatever you wanna call it.
Jazz it up a little.
Jazz it up, right. And the other one is back to the grapes. Those grapes are so scrumptious that I could just eat one, but the leaves are moldy. Could we get, could we, like, do a Photoshop and put some healthy leaves on there?
Uh, that would be one of our steps, is to get, um, some input from any local, uh, folks who've taken great photos.
Right.
Uh, we've even talked to some folks who are maybe using a drone or something to get better aerial shots of the city.
Mm-hmm. Oh, that's awesome, yeah. And I just flew in a helicopter not too long ago, and I have a few photos that I took of the city, so I could share those for your consideration. And all of the photos that are on the old website were mine, um, and if you wanna use, I have similar things, I have a lot of photos of the city. So if you need anything, let me know.
Certainly. And, uh, the content management system we have would make it very easy to update the photos. So, you know, we could use so many this month, maybe next month, change those photos. Uh, sometimes, you know, we could possibly incorporate photos from events that are happening.
Oh, right. Or submissions from citizens.
Or submissions, you know, you could have a photo of the month from the citizen.
Oh, yeah, they love something like that. Cool.
I think it's great that you can make it accessible to-
Right.
Has anyone tried it on their phone?
Pardon?
Has anyone tried it on their phone?
I have a Windows phone, so I can't even get it. Well, oh, no, I, that's the, the police thing. No, I could get this website, so-
Yeah, the website.
I didn't try it on my phone, I just tried it on my computer, but that would be-
Actually, it works fairly well, I was, I was-
It does.
Very pleased. And, and the one other, uh, part of this is, uh, we have a hosting agreement with them, so they will actually host it, so it won't use any bandwidth on the, on the city's already taxed bandwidth.
Mm-hmm.
Been a long time in coming, Mayor, but we're finally there.
Yeah, that's great. Well, congratulations. I know that, um, we had a lot of really desire to make this happen, but we didn't have the funds to do it, so it's been postponed longer than anybody wanted it to be, but it just could be, I mean, you could spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on a website.
You may recall, we went, we had to go out for good twice on the website. The first one came in, uh, from anywhere from, I think, like thirty thousand to, like, close to eighty thousand dollars to design a website. Uh, the second time we went out, Civic Plus had said, "What's your budget?" We told them, "Well, we're a small city," and we told them about what we had, and they said, "We'll do it." And part of it is that they, they, they're looking for advertisement. They wanna be able to say, "Hey, check out the city, come work," uh, and, and, and so that's what they're looking for. So they were able to, we, we kinda cut a deal with them, uh, what did it, what was the amount, seventeen?
Uh, fourteen thousand, eight-hundred a year.
And then part of it is, of course, we're, we're taking, they're gonna be hosting for us, so we'll be paying them fee, hosted tips, so it'll relieve some of the pressure off of us. So they're, they're also providing other services, as well as support, if we need any support. Uh, they've already done some training, we already done some training for a lot of our admin systems. Uh, we are gonna have about a handful of administrators, probably even less than a handful, that will actually administer the, the website, but we'll have publishers at every department, we'll have, uh, designers, multiple designers at the different departments that they, we'll have. We're hoping that what we'll be doing is encouraging the different departments to keep it up to date and keep it fresh. As you know, we've, we've had areas, uh, the recreation is one of them, that always has events, and we just, sometimes we go weeks and months out posting stuff, and we have to call and get information. And along the same lines, some of our, our, um, some of, like, such as Facebook, some of our social media, uh, we're gonna try and encourage people and, and add people to the amount of, uh, people that can go ahead and add content to it, 'cause obviously, uh, there's like three of us that are working on adding content, and after a while, um, one, they'll, they don't send us content because it's not their, they don't remember to, or that when it becomes theirs, then they'll, they'll, uh, participate a little bit more. And then secondly is, sometimes we get a lot of content, we can't get it uploaded fast enough, and sometimes we're sitting there going like, "Hmm, I read it in the paper and I never got stuff." And a lot of that is because it's already habit to go to the paper and, and send out news releases, but they don't send us anything over here. So we're hoping that by having them be part of the website and our social media, they'll go ahead and keep all, everything a little bit fresher than we currently do.
Any comments from council or staff, other staff members? Mr. Matt?
Your head in the right way.
And Civic Plus is, uh, they're specifically a government website, so they do their stuff that it does. Things like, uh, there's an alert feature here, so if we had an Amber Alert, or a weather alert, or something, that it'll, it puts a banner right across the top, it'll notify everyone who's signed up to be notified, they can get a text, email, whatever.
So what about the different websites we have, like for police, and I think Parks and Rec has this kind of a separate thing, and who else?
The library.
Oh, the fire department, the library. How will that all meld into one website?
Uh, I've spoken to most of those departments, and they have agreed that as long as they have some creative control over their content, which they will, that will, they'll all just be sub-pages of this. Uh, all the other domain names we have out there, like there's CottonwoodFire.org, the Cottonwood Police Department, or CWDB, I believe it is, those will all point to our pages here.
Okay.
So we're trying to, we are trying to make it a, a standard experience for the user, so when they come into the city, they, you know, everything, because most of your sub-pages, they all are formatted the same way.
Right.
So, you know, a citizen, when they come on, and, you know, the, the contact information's on the right, and, you know, Facebook feeds or Twitter feeds are on the left, they'll be that way on all the pages. So they, it'll be a very common experience, they won't be so frustrated. You've probably gone to pages where police have a completely different page, and, you know, it looks completely different from Parks and Rec. Uh, the one exception to that is the library.
Right, 'cause they're connected with the county.
They're connected with the county and the county system, plus they get a lot of funding that has nothing to do with Cottonwood City, at least.
Right.
Tougher situation there.
Right, right.
Um, but we haven't quite made a decision on how to work that in. And we haven't quite made a decision on how to work that in.
Mm-hmm. Well, any comments, or, let's see, what is it that you need us to do here tonight? Just, no, no motion is needed, so, direction or other comments besides moldy leaves? That's so petty, I'm sorry.
We just want to thumb down or-
Yeah. The overall is wonderful, thank you.
The big dot in the middle.
Exciting, yeah.
You're good.
All right, thank you very much. So, claims and adjustments? Move the claimed claims.
Second.
Okay, the vice mayor made the motion, and council member Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is executive session, annual review of the city manager pursuant to ARS-3843103A1. The council may vote to convene into executive session, subject to the city manager's right to compel the council to discuss this matter in open meeting. And so, what is your pleasure? Would you-
Exec session.
Exec session is okay? Okay, so I make a motion to resolve into executive session.
Second.
The mayor made the motion, council member Allen seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so, Matt, do you need me to sign anything tonight?
No.
No? You want to pass that down to Matt?